Okay, so I will now call the public hearing of Thursday, November the thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five to order. This meeting is being held in person and by electronic means. Council members and the public may participate by either method. Any members joining electronically are reminded to enable video to confirm quorum. The meeting will be live streamed on the city's website and YouTube, and meeting progress will be updated regularly on X at Van City Clerk. I do want to acknowledge that we're hosting today's public hearing on the unceded territories of the Musqueam's Coalition Spoiler to the First Nations. And I do want to thank them for their generosity, hospitality, and the love and care they show this great land that we get to live, work, and play on. I also want to thank and recognize all of our incredible teammates at the city of Vancouver who work incredibly hard every single day to make the city a way better place. Clerk, can we please have a roll call?
Yes, Mayor Simms in the chair. Councillor Kirby Young. I saw her earlier. Councillor Dominado. Councillor Bly is on leave of absence for the whole meeting for civic business. And Councillor Fry, sorry Fry, is also on leave of absence for civic business. Councillor Montague.
Present.
Councillor Claussen. Councillor Meisner.
Present.
Councillor Joe. Councillor Orr. Councillor Maloney. And the hearing has quorum chair.
Great, and you got Councillor Joe and Kirby Young?
I see. Thank you.
Thank you. The public may speak in person or by phone, or may submit written comments to mayor and council. Speakers may only speak once and will have up to five minutes to comment on the merits of the application. Please state whether you support or oppose the recommendations and if you are a Vancouver resident. Those representing for more individuals or groups, including themselves, may speak for up to eight minutes. Each person being represented must confirm their presence in person or by phone and may not speak separately. Please follow the livestream on Van City Clerk on X, sorry, at Van City Clerk on X to track meeting progress and know when your turn to speak is approaching. Please note the livestream has a slight delay. Written comments can be submitted through the mayor and council public hearing feedback forum linked on X. If you are pre-registered with a presentation, say next to have the clerk advance your slides. A reminder, at public hearings, council acts as a quasi-judicial body and must focus solely on the merits of the rezoning or heritage application. Members may ask clarifying questions of our team members or speakers, including the applicant, but should reserve debate until the speaker's list has closed. After hearing from speakers, council may one, approve the application in principle, two, approve the application in principle with amendments, or three, refuse the application, or four, refer the application to team members for further consideration. Finally, if speakers are not heard this evening, the public hearing will recess and reconvene on Thursday, November the twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five at six P M. So item number one is CD dash one rezoning, sixty-four eighty-six Chester Street. Before we begin, does anybody wish to declare a conflict of interest? Seeing no one's hands up and no one in the queue, we are going to have the clerk now read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by L P I Management Limited to be zone sixty-four eighty-six Chester Street. Residential inclusive district to comprehensive development district. To permit the development of a six-story residential rental building containing a hundred sixteen units and a replacement one-level public utility building. A floor space ratio of two point nine and a height twenty point five meter with additional height of common rooftop amenity space or mechanical upper tennesses are proposed. General manager of planning, urban design sustainability, or commence approval, subject to conditions set on the summary and recommendation. The following correspondence have been received since referral to public hearing.
Great, thank you very much. This is the first call for speakers. Any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council? Please call toll-free at one eight three 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 five three eighty-six ten, followed by participant code one oh six one four four five pound. Before the close of the speaker's list, the phone number will be posted on X and displayed during the recess. There will be an opportunity for new speakers and missed speakers to be heard at the end of the registered speakers list. Now, we do have our team members from planning, urban design, and sustainability here to present the application.
Good evening, mayor, council, and members of the public. My name is Belinda Liu, rezoning planner for this application considered under the secured rental policy. The subject site shown in red is located on the northeast corner of Forty-Ninth Avenue, which staff have confirmed is an arterial road and Chester Street, a local road. The site is comprised of one parcel, and there are no residential buildings nor tenants on site. The property contains a Telus-operated telecommunications building, parking lot, and a green space on the north end of site. While the green space is on private property, the owner has made this available for community use for several years. The surrounding area is comprised of low to mid-rise buildings with mixed uses along Fraser Street, which is one block to the west. Also to the west is a four-story strata building with a veterans' club. The site is near parks, childcares, libraries, schools, and a community center. There are bikeways close by, as well as bus services along Forty-Ninth Avenue and Fraser Street. The secured rental policy or SRP encourages purpose-built rental housing next to transit and amenities. The policy permits up to six stories on arterials as shown in dark blue on the map. The policy also seeks twenty percent of residential floor area for below-market rents for six-story buildings, which may be subject to a pro forma review. Given the site's location on Forty-Ninth Avenue and Arterial Road, combined with a unique telecommunications use, staff support a CD-one rezoning for a six-story building at this location. A density of two point seven FSR meets the intent of the SRP for a six-story building on a corner site. Form of development is informed by the SRP guidelines. This proposal is for a CD-one zone and involves replacing the existing telecommunications building with a smaller, single-story facility to be relocated to the northeast corner as shown in red here. Advances in technology have enabled Telus to modernize their wireless infrastructure from copper wiring to fiber optics, allowing for a significant reduction in the footprint of the telecommunications building. The new building will continue to house essential equipment to support uninterrupted phone and wireless services for the community. Next to the public utility structure is a six-story market rental building with a hundred and sixteen units. The density is two point nine FSR, which includes two point seven seven for the residential portion and zero point one three for the public utility building. While the overall FSR of two point nine modestly exceeds the two point seven FSR provision for a corner site, staff support the increase given the new rental units and the modernized telecommunications building. A height of sixty-seven feet is proposed for the residential building. As the applicant has requested a Class B D C L waiver, starting rents for the first tenancies cannot exceed the maximum averages set out in the D C L bylaw for each unit type as indicated in the blue column on this table. As units turn over, rents may reset at market rates. The green column shows the monthly cost of ownership compared to the D C L maximums. A total of sixty-five submissions were received during the public consultation period, including one petition with sixty-three signatures. Support was expressed for the building's design and an increase in housing stock. Concerns were expressed regarding parking and traffic, loss of green space, pressure of new residents on infrastructure and services, and height density and shadowing. In response to public comments about parking and traffic, the proposal offers eighty vehicle spaces and two hundred and forty-six bike spaces for a hundred and sixteen units. Further, the site is well-suited to encourage reduced vehicle trip and parking demand as it's in close proximity to bus routes along Forty-Ninth Avenue and Fraser Street and bikeways. Secondly, staff acknowledged the role of the private green space for community gathering and recognized that public access to the space is connected to the existing telecommunications building. Replacing the green space is not proposed. However, the project offers other benefits such as new housing and replacement trees. Regarding infrastructure capacity, the current water and sewer infrastructure is sufficient for future growth. Regarding height and density, staff support a CD-one rezoning for six stories and a two point nine FSR given the location along an arterial. Regarding shadowing, the guidelines ask for building setbacks to ensure sufficient spacing for sunlight access. The public benefits include a D C L contribution of one point six million dollars. The SRP seeks twenty percent below-market rental for six-story buildings. Based on a pro forma review, no additional land lift is generated by the proposal. Given this, staff support market rental on this site. In summary, this application is consistent with the SRP and advances the city's housing goals while modernizing critical infrastructure. Staff support the application, subject to the conditions and appendix B of the referral report. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Would the applicant like to present the application if in attendance?
Applicant, you can just use the online. Just say next and I will advance the slides for you. Is it the slides?
This is it.
So you can just say next and then?
I'm gonna say next slide. Okay. That works as well. Yes, thank you.
That's our version of Wi-Fi.
Okay. Thank you, mayor, council, staff. Staff, thank you for your collaboration on this application and your hard work in moving it forward to this point. So a little bit about who I am and who we are as the applicant. My name is Lauren Walensky. I'm Vice President of Development at Lead Corps Properties. I'm here representing the development partnership between Lead Corps and Telus, a collaboration built on a longstanding relationship. We also have Tazo Yamamoto from Yamamoto Architecture, who is available to answer any design-related questions that councillors may have. So the technology context, technology is important here. And over the past decade, Telus has made significant multi-generational investment in the city's data and telecommunications infrastructure. Lead Corps has proudly partnered with Telus in deploying next-generation fiber optic cable throughout the city. This decade of work has laid the foundation for redeveloping the site to accommodate a hundred and sixteen new purpose-built rental homes. Next slide. The replacement of the historical public utility building is made possible by new fiber optic infrastructure. Because fiber consumes less building area, we're able to dramatically reduce the footprint of the existing telecommunications building. Next slide. Reliable, dependable telecommunications infrastructure has become a necessity for the functioning of a modern city like the city of Vancouver. This is critical infrastructure that connects residents to vital services and allows frontline workers to communicate during times of crisis. Next slide. So now, how does this all relate to this site? Like most of the existing utility sites, the building at Chester and Forty-Ninth was built in the nineteen forties. This is what the site looks like today. The property contains a telecommunications building, which over time has evolved to include a surface parking lot and a segment of green space at the northern end of the site. The parking lot and green space were originally meant as expansion space for the utility. In the nineteen seventies, public access was granted to allow the community use of the green space. We understand that this space is appreciated by some in the community, but the area is private property, and at no point was public access secured through a park dedication or an S R W or other legal mechanisms. It always existed as a function of the utility site, of the utility use on site. Next slide. The proposal is for a new, much smaller utility building, as highlighted in the bottom right of that site plan, which opens the rest of the site up for residential rental development. Next slide. Given its much smaller footprint, the utility will be hidden behind the residential buildings. Currently, it is in the foreground and occupies almost two-thirds of the site. Next slide. And to close, just wanted to highlight some of the benefits of this project. This is an existing public utility site. There are no residential units on the site, therefore zero tenant displacement. And as a result of that, a hundred percent new net rental gain in the community. This community does punch below its weight in terms of rental supply. And as a result, this will be a welcome to the community. And finally, you know, this is sort of the unsexy part of it, but critical infrastructure upgrades. Upgrading this facility from a facility that was built in the nineteen forties will ensure that Vancouver will have reliable, critical infrastructure for the next, hopefully, eighty years to come. And that is all. I'm very happy to answer any questions of council. And thank you for your time.
Great, thank you very much. Now, are there any questions from council to our team members or the applicant, noting that this is the only opportunity for council to ask questions of the applicant? And councillor Claussen, you're up.
Thanks very much, and thanks for the presentation from staff and the applicant. I just, I know we remain familiar with these plans quite some time ago. And so that familiarization that we got a little earlier was much appreciated. And I know this is a part of a larger sort of suite of sites that Telus has their utilities on site. And so I, you know, I must admit now, it, I think going forward, it'd be really interesting. I mean, this has the unusual sort of private land that became a sort of public space there. When I go on Google Street View, you can see an elderly couple sort of getting some shade and sitting in this sort of little park-like setting. So that won't exist anymore. But really, when I look at the renderings, the one question I had was the outbuilding for the utility, which is going from copper to fiber optic. I'm just curious, is there going to be any noise coming from that building? Will it potentially be disruptive for people who are, you know, kind of residing right beside it? It's, in the renderings, it's not very pretty. It's quite plain. It has a protective feature to try and kind of hide some of the, probably the mechanical on the roof of the building. Was there any thought given to how you can kind of make that kind of experience for people who are living on that inner courtyard, looking down at that, might sort of see something that doesn't look quite so utilitarian?
Yeah, I mean, that's a great question. So a couple things. Firstly, this type of use currently functions on-site at a much larger scale with much more mechanical equipment and frankly, with much older mechanical equipment. So the new building will be smaller, will be cooling a lot less square footage, and will be modern rooftop equipment that will be much quieter. There is an acoustic consultant that has been retained. And what's interesting about that comment as well is, as, you know, the ones developing the residential as well, we are very concerned about this rooftop equipment and aren't sharing noise mitigation because we don't want those units impacted. Because we, at the end of the day, have to lease up those units, and we want people to stay and enjoy their time in these units. So noise mitigation is really a priority for us. And we have a noise engineer on board, and mitigation will be done to the fullest extent. And of course, to the extent to comply with the bylaw.
Thank you for that answer. Again, I realize that this is the beginning of a protracted effort to try and develop these sites and bring more needed rental housing in these areas. But I just, just sort of planting the idea that if there are these, I forgot the acronym is now, but it's a public-private space or private-public space that is available in sort of, that clearly created a pathway to sort of cut across the neighborhood in a different way. That doesn't, that won't exist anymore because it's all being occupied with the building. But yeah, just something reflecting upon as we go forward, whether there is a way for us to, again, be, it just lends itself to being a more friendly addition to the neighborhood in that regard. But regardless, I do think that the project stands up very well. But I just had those questions about that sort of living experience next to the building, and hopefully, it's quiet and looks okay from the window. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, seeing no one else in the question queue. This is the second call for speakers. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free at one eight three 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 five three eighty-six ten, followed by participant code one oh six one four four five pound before the close of the speaker's list. The phone number will be posted on X and displayed during the recess. We'll now hear from the public. Any registered speakers in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium when your name is called. Phone in speakers will be unmuted when your name is called. Speakers will have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. So our first speaker today is speaker number one, Paul Beesla. Is Paul on the line there?
I'm here. Can you folks hear me?
You can hear you. Great. Please go ahead.
Awesome. My name is Paul Beesla. I'm a resident of Sunset, which is on Musqueam land. I'm calling to support this project today. I think it's a great project. I am calling today officially on behalf of the Punjabi Market Collective Society. For those who aren't familiar with our work, we're an arts and culture nonprofit with a mission to support and protect the cultural hub of Punjabi market, which is right at the intersection of Main and Forty-Ninth. So I'm very close to this project. I've submitted some comments already, but I'd like to take this opportunity to reiterate some of the contents of that letter. Couple of the main reasons why I feel this project is important in general is because our city is in need of diversified housing options. Not everyone can afford a single detached home, and so having that diversity of housing options is critical as affordability becomes a challenge all over Metro Vancouver. The other positive effects that this increased density will have in the neighboring areas is that it will help with the local economics on both Fraser Street, which is bustling and very busy and has a lot of shops. And also, it will definitely benefit the Punjabi market, which is right at Forty-Ninth and Main. And we desperately need that support to support those mom-and-pop shops. As some of you may know, Forty-Ninth Avenue is host to the third busiest bus route in Metro Vancouver, which is the Forty-Nine Bus. So the benefit to the residents of that building will be that they'll have a bus right there immediately available to them. The challenge that's being posed to both transit users and city planners is that because it's one of the busiest routes, hopefully, this will support the prioritization of allowing that particular route to become faster in the form of bustling. So that's my little pitch for my pro-transit position. In addition to that, I had the opportunity to speak to friends and family who live in the area. And I think sometimes folks just need options and solutions to whatever their concerns and fears might be. And if I could share, one of my friends lives one block away, and they shared how the only concerns they heard were about parking. So I, we had a good discussion about options that single attached families have in terms of garages and alleyways. And I also informed my friend of the options for residential parking permit program. And they were unfamiliar with that. And so helping create awareness and education around things like that sometimes, and providing solutions, sometimes allows people to kind of mitigate those fears of the unknown and fears of change. So those are really my comments, ones that of course support this project once again. And I'm just looking forward to that building being redeveloped, so we have something to look at. And the economic, local economics benefiting from increased density. Thank you for your time, and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you very much. Speaker number two, Rob Nijer.
Yes, thank you. My name is Rob Nijer. I'm the Executive Director of Sunset on Fraser Business Association. We run from Forty-first to Fifty-first, so we're very close to this rezoning application location. The Board of Sunset on Fraser Business Association unanimously supports the rezoning application. And we have been fully informed of the application through several face-to-face meetings with representatives of Telus and Lead Corps. They've answered all of our questions, along with me inviting other organizations such as South Vancouver Neighborhood House to meet with them. And the conversations have been detailed. I think they've addressed the usual questions that come up for a higher development in what is really the highest right now is four-story. So I've also spoken with many residents and shoppers living in the area and have not met anyone strongly opposing the application. I'm sure there are listeners here, I have spoken with them, that have concerns about parking, lane access, traffic, shadowing, et cetera. And there are those that are strongly opposed. But as councillors know, the residents that live closest to, like feet away from the development, usually have very strong opposition that is personal. It's for personal reasons. It's not community-based necessarily, and it's not city-based. So I've spoken with them. And issues such as, well, we lose that green space at the Telus lot that has existed for decades. We lose the comfort of having, you know, less traffic there and a building that really is not used, right? It's just a station. So you really have peace right across the street. However, those things are not issues that the city can build around. They are inconveniences that come about. And I remind people of the building right across that four-story. Twenty-five years ago when it was built, there was strong opposition from residents that had single-dwelling homes around there, because that's all it was. And they said, how can you build four stories? You're gonna dwarf our homes. There's gonna be- You're going to dwarf our homes, there's going to be shadows, there's going to be so much traffic. Now then, those at the four-story are saying, how can you do a six-story? There's going to be traffic, there's going to be shadows. So it's a cycle of life here in Vancouver, and the Board understands that the roads such as Forty-Ninth Avenue are going to see the same development than changes that are going throughout the city along Forty-Ninth, Forty-first, Fraser Street, and King Edward. Our neighborhood is almost exclusively single dwelling homes, and some developments that bring more citizens and create more density is ultimately the right direction for the neighborhood and the city. The lot owned by TELUS has been well-recognized by this community. Besides the TELUS station, there's a large green space in the lot. And since this is private property, the green space has largely gone unused. It is time to take an outdated mechanical station, modernize it, make it a lot smaller, and use the rest of that very valuable Vancouver land as a community asset. And community asset, I mean more housing, more rental housing, more shoppers for mom-and-pop shops, more community members, and all of this is the right direction for Sunset and for our city. I think the six stories with one-story underground parking is a reasonable and sensible addition to the neighborhood. Yes, it is higher, but is the height of the building is balanced with the future needs of Vancouver and the current skyline and reality of today's Sunset neighborhood. But I think the application was fair, and I think the city recognizing it as that is the right thing to do. The Sunset on Fraser Business Association therefore fully supports this application for zoning with a six-story and one-floor underground parking development because we believe it's the right direction for Sunset community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So the next speaker is speaker number three, Frank Hangler.
Thank you, councillors. My name is Frank Hangler, and I do live on Chester Street, right next to the proposed development. So I want to start by saying that I do support more housing in Vancouver. Zero people currently live at this site, as has been pointed out, and I do think that more than zero should live there. And I also want to mention that I'm speaking on behalf of nearly seventy other residents who have signed a petition outlining exactly the points I'm going to be making. Our core objection is really simple. With respect, city staff have misapplied the secured rental policy to state that this proposal does comply with the location criteria for a six-story rental building, but it does not. The referral report says on page four, up to six stories may be considered for projects on arterials. This application complies with the location criteria under SRP for six-story buildings. But there is one critical problem with this assessment, which is that this site does not face an arterial. The address is on Chester Street, the building faces Chester Street, the entry is on Chester Street, the foyer is on Chester Street. The referral report itself says on page three, the site has a frontage along Chester Street. And the fact is, as city staff have already explained, Chester Street is a local street. It's not an arterial street. The site flanks Forty-Ninth Avenue, which is an arterial street, but it faces a local street. Now, why does this matter? It's not a distinction without a difference. It's actually central to the secured rental policy guidelines. The SRP explicitly addresses exactly the situation. In this situation, the policy allows a maximum four-story building on the local street with a five-story section on the arterial. Explicitly, it only allows six-story buildings on sites with frontage on arterials, a lane behind, and with twenty percent below-market units or a hundred percent social housing. All those criteria need to be met, and this proposal includes none of them. What about the site's irregularity because of the telecom building? Well, the SRP addresses that too. It says, in general, irregular sites will not be considered for more height or density than may be achieved on a regular lot. In some cases, increased setbacks and reduced FSR may be required. So this application goes in the opposite direction. It seeks extra height, reduced setbacks, and higher FSR beyond what the relevant schedule allows. And the application says this on the statistics page. It requests a building roughly fifty percent denser and sixty percent taller than allowed with smaller setbacks, and that will inevitably affect the neighborhood with impacts, yes, on shading, privacy, traffic, and basic enjoyment of property. But there is a reason, and these are some of the reasons, the SRP sets those limits. The referral report does not engage with any of this. It simply asserts locational eligibility for six stories, and it's incorrect. Under the SRP, a six-story building is not permitted here on a local street, and for that reason alone, I do urge you to reject this application or at least return it to city staff. But I want to focus on why your decision matters beyond just this site. So first is a matter of fairness. Every property owner, myself included, must rely on council-approved rules in this city. If one project is allowed to bypass those rules, why should anyone trust the stated limits? Why even have a secured rental policy? Well, that's point number two, which is consistency. The SRP was presented to the public as a simplified predictable framework with clear building types. The SRP guide says it provides, quote, certainty for residents and applicants. If staff can go ahead and treat a local street as an arterial street, that certainty disappears. And the third point is norms. Each of you has sworn an oath to carry out your office of integrity. I would argue that integrity is weakened if established policies are simply ignored or waived to produce a desired outcome. I think we can all think of prominent politicians who are perfectly willing to do that in today's world, but I hope we don't imitate them here in Vancouver. So to reiterate, we're not arguing against housing. The SRP allows four stories here, I admit that, with an appropriate transition. You can support rental housing without undermining your own policy framework. So what we are asking is simple. Please enforce the secured rental policy as it's written, send this project back, instruct staff to evaluate it based on actual site conditions, not a mistake in classification. I do think a compliant project is entirely achievable on this lot. I think with more communication with the neighborhood, we could build something that works. A six-story building is not that. Thanks very much.
Great. Thank you very much. Speaker number four, Fiona Hunt.
Thank you, Mayor and councillors. Good evening. My name is Fiona Hunt. I live at sixty-four seventy-five Chester Street, which is the four-story billing, building across the street from the proposed development site. I'm here on behalf of myself and various building residents and other neighbors in the neighborhood. We oppose the rezoning application. I second the comments that Speaker Three has just made. In the interest of time, I won't duplicate his points, but they form part of my response as well. I'll focus on three areas in my comments tonight. Firstly, the proposed size of the building is too big and would substantially and negatively impact the neighborhood if allowed to proceed as currently planned. At six stories, it goes against the secured rental policy guidelines for our neighborhood and would impose a monolithic presence on the street, blocking light and increasing the density and urban feeling of the neighborhood. Related to this point, the proposed development had requested a smaller setback of two-point-five meters, which would push the building facade, one-point-two meters, into designated yard space and erode the green space of the neighborhood. I noticed that there is a note in Appendix B of the referral report suggesting that the developer revised that to three-point-seven meters or twelve feet, which is the standard setback in the city's guidelines. However, this wording appears only to be a suggestion. Stronger wording there is needed. The increased height of the building and the potential reduction in the building setbacks would reduce, would result in its domination of the neighborhood and would not contribute to making Chester Street a people-first street. Secondly, the proposed development would obliterate a park that currently exists on the lot, which provides the neighborhood with canopy cover and green space. ECTEL promised to preserve this park for community use when it was initially created. The park is home to several mature trees, which are protected under bylaw nine-nine-five-eight, and these would be destroyed by the proposed development. In addition to impacting the environmental dynamics of the neighborhood, the proposal is at odds both with the city's strategic objective number six, which aims to sustain and expand Vancouver's citywide tree canopy, and with the city's updated urban forest strategy. The strategy report notes that our neighborhood, Sunset, has one of the lowest canopy coverages in the city. Destroying this park would decrease the neighborhood's canopy cover further. As it stands, the proposed development goes against a key city goal of promoting greater canopy coverage in our neighborhood and would destroy an important green space highly valued by current residents. Finally, the proposed development would significantly increase vehicle traffic in our area, which already faces congestion and crowded street parking during peak hours. This raises safety concerns for pedestrians, cyclists, and local schoolchildren, not to mention concerns around increased car congestion, pollution, and noise. The proposed building has a hundred and sixteen units and only eighty parking stalls, of which seventy-two are residential, six are visitor, and two are designated commercial. This would place further stress on street parking, which is already inadequate for the needs of our neighborhood. By doubling the population of sixty-four-hundred block of Chester Street with this new development, and without increasing capacity of public transit, especially the already overcrowded Forty-Nine Bus Line, the Forty-Ninth Fraser and Chester Zone would become unmanageably busy by drawing far more car traffic to this zone. Overall, the proposed development would significantly reduce the greenery and openness of the street and would create a much greater urbanized feeling as well as an increased density of concrete. It would greatly reduce the quality of living space for those resident in this neighborhood and would go against the city's self-reclaimed goals for the health and well-being of Vancouver residents. I urge council to reject this proposal and return it back to staff to add additional conditions to the proposal. I ask the following: that the building be limited to a four, four standard stories in height, in keeping with the zoning guidelines for a non-arterial street such as ours, as per the secured rental policy; that the park be preserved in its current size and state and the new development incorporated into its design, maintaining the canopy cover for the neighborhood and preserving the mature bylaw-protected trees, or an equivalent solution that maintains canopy cover and the protected trees. Thirdly, that staff include stronger wording regarding the setback and require the development to adhere to at least the minimum of three-point-seven meters. A bigger setback would be better. The setbacks should give ample space and soil depth for trees to be planted and grow to full height to contribute to the green canopy in the neighborhood and open people-first streets. Finally, that the building be required to provide at least one parking stall for each unit in the building. More visitor parking should also be included. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you very much, Fiona. Speaker number five, Jaiman Monga. Jaiman, are you on the line? Speaker number six, Gurveer Singh. Gurveer, are you on the line?
Yes, yes.
Please go ahead.
My name is Gurveer Gill. I'm here today to speak in support of the proposed rental residential building on Chester Street and Forty-Ninth Avenue. I'm a student at Langara College, and while I go to school, I'm still living with my family. This development proposal is close to where I live and go to school. I want to talk about why more housing is important to me as a student. Once you make the transition to being a university or college student, many of us are, many of us are looking for more independence and would want to live alone or with roommates. But for most students, finding housing that's both affordable and accessible is extremely challenging. Many of my classmates, both local and international, struggle to find a place to live that's close to school and within their budget. Some have to commute long distances from other cities or share small spaces with several roommates just to make it work. These aren't ideal or sustainable living situations, and they take a toll on students' well-being, focus, and ability to succeed. Not only is housing important because we needed to ensure we have affordable rentals for generations to come, but it's critical for people like me who are just starting out. Having a secure, affordable place to live allows you to focus on your studies rather than having to work full-time just to survive. Without it, our generation has to either compromise our career aspirations or our well-being. I know brand-new rental housing will not be the most affordable at first, but we need more options in this community in general. If there are newer rental apartments, that will free up some of the cheaper, older options for students and other people looking for affordable apartments. Thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you very much. The next speaker is number seven, Joey Baines. Joey, are you on the line?
Yeah, hi. Good evening.
Please go ahead.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to thank you guys for the opportunity to just to speak tonight. My name is Joey Baines. I'm currently a student in Langara College and also a Vancouver resident. I moved to Vancouver recently from Prince George, just to go to school. And like many students who come from outside the lower mainland, finding housing has been extremely difficult, and it's become a pretty big obstacle to go overcome. Right now, I live with a few roommates in a shared apartment, not because I want to, it's because it's the only way to afford rent over here. And when I first started looking for a place, it was difficult. Most one-bedroom or even studio units were out of my budget. As you, as I can't work full-time because I'm a student, many of the listings are gone within hours, and sometimes there are even twenty people showing up just to view the same suite. The shortage of affordable rental housing means students like me have very few choices. We end up living far away, spending a lot of time and money commuting from there and back, or we pack into shared spaces sometimes with strangers, which can be unhygienic at some points. That's why I support this project and the proposed rental residential building. Apartments that are secured as rental is key because it provides security. Dense neighborhoods with different forms of housing, older and newer, building these types of communities, communities around campuses should be a priority because this supports the lives and well-being of us young students and the future. Vancouver is a great place to study and build a future, but housing is the biggest barrier for any of us to think about staying here in the long term. If we students want to succeed here and to contribute to the city's workforce after graduation, we need rental housing like this that helps us out in the future and in the short term. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thanks for calling in this evening. Speaker number eight has withdrawn. Speaker number nine, Harjinder Danau. Do you have Harjinder on the line? Okay. Speaker number ten, Rohit Saran. On the phone? Okay. Speaker number eleven, Jennifer Tade. In person, is Jennifer here? Welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you.
You have five minutes.
Thank you to the City Council and to Brenda Lou for taking our feedback in the spring and again at this public meeting. We welcome the rental building, but not at the expense of erasing the rules of decent development. Vancouver zoning states six-story mixed-use rental RR-three-B zone requires a minimum twenty percent of the residential floor to be permanently secured as below-market rental units. The TELUS Proposal Referral Report dated September twenty-third for October seventh meeting this year makes no mention of below-market rentals. Taking away the park and its many fifty-year-old trees is criminal. This park was given to the neighborhood for public use in writing by the telephone company in nineteen-seventy-three and again when they expanded their parking lot in nineteen-ninety. It was a letter from the telephone company in, in writing, and also the development documents also stated that this park was for public use. I submitted these documents to Brenda Lou in the spring. City of Vancouver, when they were building the building, and they expanded their park, or when TELUS built the building and expanded the parking lot, it was important to them to, to keep their word, but the city should have registered this with land titles, I believe, so that it would have stayed in perpetuity. Going on to the setbacks. The setback on the, on Chester Street is not far enough back to allow for any greenery other than very small trees. And it, the setback on the north side should be oversized because sixty-four-twenty-four Chester Street will lose ninety percent of their light, causing drastic mold issues. The proposed building does not provide enough parking stalls for the amount The proposed building does not provide enough parking stalls for the amount of rental units. It's got 72 parking spots for 116 units and a large number of TELUS vehicles. The City of Vancouver Parking Department lied to the taxpayers of Chester Street by omission. The ticketing staff could not determine Fraser Street employees using our residence-only parking all day and evening. It took us, our neighbourhood, three petitions for permit parking to be passed. During this time and many conversations with the city staff, we were not told that both Fraser Street and the seven-block parkade were going to be metered without even one free parking spot. Now Chester Street is almost 50% two-hour parking with litter. We were told that our residence parking would, we were not told that our residence parking would turn into a nightmare of constant cars parking. The new duplexes on our street all have suites resulting in four cars per house. The two-hour free parking should be removed and replaced with permit parking only. This increased density and a new apartment will result in the city selling parking permits where there are no spaces to park. There is a shortage of 40 parking stalls in the new building and with all of the duplexes that like I mentioned before, there is a need for four times the parking spots that we have in a one-block area. The proposed, TELUS has proposed a few years ago a monopole with noisy cancer-causing repeater receivers to be sighted on, to be put on the monopole. But the neighbours got together and we signed a petition and the city stopped their proposal. Now in the referral report, TELUS is mentioning the mechanical devices that will be placed on the roof. The renters nor the homeowners will be able to stop these receivers on a TELUS building. TELUS cares about their repeater receivers and not the building itself. Bylaw 9958 says the trees are protected that are greater than 20 centimetres. We have 50-year-old trees in this park and they're going to take them all down.
Jennifer, I'm just noting that's your time, it's five minutes.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for sharing your views this evening. Speaker number 12, Stephanie Chan, in person. Stephanie, I forgot to note, just if you noted if you're a resident or not as well.
Sorry, I didn't catch the last part.
Are you a resident?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead and you have five minutes.
Good evening, everyone. I realise it's been a very long day for you here in council, so thank you. My name is Stephanie, I am a Vancouver resident. This city has been my home since 1989. I'm here because I vehemently oppose the current plans for 6,486 Chester Street as proposed by LPI management on behalf of TL Fairfax Property. City councillors, please do not approve this development. I am not Western Canada's largest telecom with millions at my disposal selling the future as friendly when it suits, nor its developer of choice, nor am I city staff whose job and responsibility it is to scrutinise proposals, recognise when they clearly misrepresent non-trivial details and hold their authors and architects accountable to establish policies. I am a homeowner. I have school-aged children entering the best part of their formative years. I have a house with 100-year-old foundations. I cannot afford to give this proposal only a cursory glance because what is decided will have significant and irreversible impacts on quality of life for real individuals. Not some holding company, but the people who actually call the 6,400 block of Chester home. Let me be clear, I support more housing in this city. I can even support reasonable plans to develop the site next to us. I do not support willful misrepresentation of what exists at Chester Street. I do not support this brazen attempt to exceed what is allowed. I do not support what will be the erasure of neighbourhood green space in complete disregard of community peace. If you approve this flagrant violation of zoning policy, you breach our trust in democratic processes. You become complicit in enabling a corporation to seek maximum profit at the expense of ordinary people. You vote to permit a six-story building with 116 rental units and you will cast a perpetual shadow, literally, on our lives. In winter, we will not see the sun. There will be loss of privacy, there will be street congestion from inadequate parking. There better not be incessant noise emanating from that proposed utility building compromising our work, our sleep or our mental health. Thank you councillor Claussen for raising the noise issue. The future is not friendly, no matter how many billboards TELUS buys. The future is a chaotic but prolonged construction zone during the best years of my children's childhoods. I could accept this if at the end of it, there was something beautiful and considerate of the character of the neighbourhood in its place. Every spring, the grove of plum blossom trees besides us erupts into pinks. Their yellow leaves are falling now, but the Japanese maple is still a deep vibrant red. And I know for a fortnight in April, the mature magnolias just on the other side of the fence will be absolutely glorious. Don't sign off on the destruction of these trees for a wall which isn't even supposed to be so close or so high. Chester Street is not an arterial. Yes, let's make the future friendly, for real. Make the developer abide by the clear policies which protect our city from indiscriminate, speculative builds, convenience and solely corporate interest. Please serve the people who vote you into office. Please vote this proposal down.
Thank you Stephanie for sharing your views with council. I'm going to check in now if we have any additional speakers in chamber. Hearing none. Are there any additional speakers online clerk?
We do have an anonymous speaker. Which we can check with them on the break and have them come in after the break, or you could call upon them now, whichever.
I'm happy to call upon them now. Are they one of the registered speakers?
No.
Okay, well, let's maybe just hear the, can we put them through? Speaker?
Speaker 434?
Sorry?
Speaker 434, is it me? Can you hear me?
Yes, can you state your name and if you're a resident of Vancouver?
Prime Stidworthy, I'm a resident of Burnaby, frequent Vancouver, yeah.
Okay, okay, you have five minutes to address council on this application.
Oh, is this regarding the budget, sorry?
No, this is, we're not dealing with budget, we're in a public hearing.
Okay, apologies, I'm still on the budget thing. My apologies, you can carry on.
No worries, there's been a lot going on today. Okay, okay, there's no speakers at this time? Okay. So this is our third and final call for speakers. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by the participant code 1061445 pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be posted on X and displayed during the recess. We will now take a two-minute recess council for any additional speakers to join us online. Just to thank you councillors who are online for putting your videos on. Clerk, do we have any additional speakers in the chamber or on the line?
Just checking, Chair.
Thank you.
We have none, no callers on the line. Is there anybody coming forward?
One in chamber?
Not seeing any.
Okay, if so, the speakers list is now closed. Clerk, has there been a large volume of public comments received on this item since 5pm today? No. Okay, thank you. In that case, I am closing receipt of the public comments. Does the applicant have any closing comments? No. Okay, do staff have any closing comments? Okay, thank you. Council, do you have any final questions for staff? I see, oh, there are a few. Excellent, okay. All events, councillor Claussen, go ahead please.
Yeah, just, I've got my microphone on here. Is it working?
We can put it on, sorry, give me one sec. Yeah, it should be on.
No light today. Just a quick question regarding, there's a question around permitted parking and two-hour parking on Chester. Just understanding that, that parking pressures may exist there, is the idea of transitioning over to a permitted parking, is there, is there a sort of a clear pathway for something like that, or is that something we just implement once we have a multi-family building put in there?
Thanks for the question. Daniel Klein from Engineering is online to answer that question.
Hi, thanks so much, Daniel Klein from Development Major Projects and Engineering. Yeah, so there's a couple avenues that this can be addressed. One is through the resident perm parking program where residents can request a review. It sounds like neighbours in the community have done that already. And then subsequently after the development is complete, if approved, then staff will look through the conditioned permit parking signage. They can take a look at that residential permit parking component as part of that process as well and they can be flexible on that and take a look when the building comes online for occupation.
Thanks, just, I'm sure you've just explained this sort of regulatory process. Do you know, this is not the, pardon me, this is not the first multi-family building we've built in a neighbourhood like this. I need to drink water. Sorry about that, but I just wanted to know what the experience has been with parking experiences. Have we been able to mitigate some of them when we bring these kinds of developments into communities like this?
It's challenging to say in general, but typically staff monitor parking, especially in response to either inquiries or as developments come online, there's an opportunity to take a look, but it's hard to kind of generalise across the city and also there's a lot of perception as well that makes it challenging to generalise.
Okay, all right, thanks. Those are my questions, Chair.
Thank you for the questions. Councillor Orr, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. Question through the Chair to staff, can I, can you sort of address the claim that was made that this project is against the secured rental policy because the frontage is included on Chester Street?
Yep, we'll get your mic.
Can we hear you?
Yes.
Thanks for the question. So staff was anticipating this question and prepared a response, so staff acknowledged that if we were to rezone to an existing residential rental district under the secured rental policy at this location, a five-story building stepping down to four would be permitted at the location. However, this is a unique project, rezoning to a CD1 zone, which permits staff to exercise discretion when assessing the project under the secured rental policy framework. So staff are supportive of a six-story building at this location for a couple reasons. Number one being the arterial location, the SRP does support six-story buildings on arterials. Number two, the telecommunications use is unique and it requires specific accommodations. And then number three, staff did review this application, including the urban development team and have concluded that a six-story building is appropriate at this location.
So a lot of thought went into it. This isn't like we missed something, we were very confident, you know, we used our discretion and talked to a lot of different people and really took a lot of time with this.
That's correct, yes. Staff did complete a review of this application and concluded that a six-story building is appropriate at the location.
Okay, thanks, that's all my questions.
Thank you councillor Orr, councillor Zhou.
Yeah, thanks Chair. So also a question to staff regarding the concern about shadowing on the sunlight in the winter, can you address the concern from one of the speakers?
Yeah, thanks for the question. I am Havan Soret, planner two. Has a six-story building, this proposal provide only minimum shadow impacts on the neighbourhood and the staff only, as part of the solar access policy, staff only consider the fall and spring equinoxes between 10 to 4 and it has minimal impacts on the neighbourhood.
Okay, so the speaker was concerned about the sunlight in the winter, but mainly like in Vancouver today, there's no sunlight. So would that be something that we could tell the speaker not too concerned about the sunlight?
Councillor Hiroko Kobayashi, I'm a senior development planner. Thank you for the question. So the policy specifically considered for the public parks and then also schoolyard, those spaces, the policy doesn't limit anything for the private properties regarding the shadowing.
Okay, thank you. So in other words, this aligns with our policy?
Yes, that's correct. Thank you.
Another concern regarding the green space and the tree, I know there will be some trees will be removed due to the construction and how those trees will be replaced and how many of them will be replaced?
Thanks for the question, that's correct. So the proposal is proposing the removal of the trees on site. At this point, 10 trees are proposed for replacement, however, the numbers are not finalized until the DP stage and also note that there are nine city trees that are being retained.
And the replacement will be the same tree or different types of trees?
That, it's finalized at the DP stage, during the DP stage.
Okay, thank you. All right, thanks, that's all my question, thanks Chair, thanks.
Thank you councillor Zhou, councillor Kirby Young.
Yeah, thanks. My questions have been asked, but I'll just follow up on a clarification with respects to what would normally be allowed and I understand the six-story if it was on arterial, the five stepping down to four, four-story townhouse on the side and you've suggested it's in terms of co-locating it with, with the, sorry, it has been a long day, with the utility requirement. With respects to the BMR component, the below-market rental typically would be required for the higher story, you speak to the fact you're saying You speak to the fact you're saying the financials did not support inclusion of BMR?
Thanks for the question. So we have Zoheb from Real Estate Services online to respond to that question.
Thank you. Staff on the line? No. Do we have real estate?
Anybody want to comment on that?
I can, I can respond to it.
Thank you.
So your question-
Hi there, sorry.
Oh. Hi, Zoheb.
Hi, Zoheb, Real Estate Services.
Okay, can you go, do you want us to repeat the question? Did you hear it?
Chair, I'm 25 seconds into waiting for a response for this.
We'll, we'll pause your timer.
Thanks.
Do you need the question repeated?
Yes, please, could you please repeat the question?
Yeah, my question, we had an earlier question, I don't know if you heard it, with respects to the six-story and the five-story, the arterial, the side street, et cetera. But the reference to the policy also requiring typically BMR, the below-market units. Can you comment on the financial review and why that's not included?
Yes, so we reviewed the applicant's pro forma and the plans provided. And this specific project includes utility infrastructure and, you know, the, which doesn't really give, provide a return and adds additional costs. So this, this is unique to this, you know, specific six-story rental and that's why we determined there was no additional land lift to support BMR.
And just for further clarity, did you do the financial analysis of the utility end of five or a five-story stepping down as per the policy? Was that considered?
We, we pretty much just reviewed the, the proposal as it is, that we're asked to review. So we just looked at, at this one.
Okay. So the rationale then, I guess, being asking the question the same way as to why it's six and not the five stepping down to the four? As per the SRP? In, in similar locations?
Do you want, staff, did you want to comment on that?
Thanks, Casey Peters, Assistant Director of the Rezoning Centre. We do review the applications as submitted to us. So the application that was reviewed by real estate was what was received from the applicant team.
I understand that's what was received. I guess the question, because I'm trying to respond to the question that was raised by the public, is we can have a policy, but we can have applicants that will submit a number of applications that may not be compliant with policy. So did we not have, do we have a discussion about the opportunity to be compliant?
Certainly, we did have a conversation with them and the response that we received was that it was not viable.
Okay. Because of the cost of the infrastructure and the build overall, or?
I think there's a number of factors that go into that. Certainly, the infrastructure cost is unique to this project, but as well the location and the, the challenging market that we're in.
Okay, thank you.
Is that all, councillor Kirby Young? Thank you. I'm just going to advance myself for a couple of follow-up questions. Just in that, in that same vein, councillor Kirby Young, just, can you just recap for all of council? What I was hearing from a couple of speakers is there's a concern that this isn't compliant. I heard there's a number of reasons potentially why, but in fact, there's some discretion because it's a zoning, rezoning for a CD1. Could you just walk us through that? Because over my time in council, I know it can be a bit confusing with some of our policy frameworks. Some are regulatory, some are actually guidelines. And so could you just walk through what we're seeing again so that it's really clearly understood in terms of the SRP, the rezoning application and where there was staff discretion in the context of that? I think it would be really just, I think, helpful, I think to the points that I think councillor Kirby Young was raising and others.
Thanks for the question, councillor Templar, Sanctionist Director of Rezoning. So effectively, council sets the policy for us to consider applications. The secured rental policy has been in place for some time. It provides the broad kind of policy direction to both applicants and staff. As you heard from, from my colleague Linda, the intention of this site through an RR district schedule might have been for a five-story project. But through our CD1 process and the policy does allow for a CD1 process, we're allowed to apply some discretion when we have unique sites or different complications of that. So on, on balance and on a whole, we do apply our discretion as we're kind of reviewing those. We use our guidelines as information, help inform those reviews and try to present a fair and objective opinion to council. So based on the applications submitted and the conversations we had with the applicant and the feedback we receive from council, from the public, the overall proposal that's in front of you is something that's supportable by staff and generally consistent and informed by the policy that directed it.
Thank you, I appreciate that, that helps add some clarity. And then I just have one more question on the subject of, a couple of speakers raised the subject of the green space. And what I heard, I believe, from the applicant earlier on is that they said when the building was first developed, what evolved into green space was really space they were, they had, were holding for potential growth or need. And I'm, and that's my words, not theirs, in the future. Obviously, in the current state, they don't need more space, they actually need a smaller footprint. But was this ever registered as park or any kind? Because that kind of came up, is that the city, someone referenced the city should have registered with its land titles. But I'm, I, I don't know, this is actually not a park under our park designations. It's just a green space as part of the property. Is that correct? Can you just speak to that?
Yep, that's correct. So this green space is not considered a park per, like, under the park board jurisdiction. So this is a green space that was offered to the community by the property owner as a public space.
Okay, and it's been used like that for ti, since that time as such, okay?
That's right.
Um, thank you for clarifying those points. I'm going to advance councillor Maloney.
Thank you. I have a question about the secured rental policy guidelines. And perhaps it'd be helpful for people listening to have explained to them, like, the origin of when this was drafted. And I know that as a council, there have been some decisions lately to prioritize building multifamily housing on quieter, safer streets that are less subject to the negative effects of motor vehicle traffic. And I've heard the director of planning talk about how we're moving away from the historic focus of building multifamily housing on arterials. Could someone give some background to people listening about that?
Thank you for the question. So the secured rental policy, as we use it today with the rezoning opportunities to district schedules, was brought to council in December 2021. So we've had it for a few years. There was an earlier version of it in advance, but this allowed more, increased opportunities. And certainly, the intent of this policy is to incentivize new opportunities for rental development, to provide, you know, appropriate transitions in, in neighbourhoods that haven't seen development opportunities in the past. So they were brought forward with these district schedule options, with guidelines that accompanied them, that staff implement through the zoning and through the development perma stage.
And what, can you, can you just elaborate on, on where we're moving to as a city in terms of citing housing off arterials?
Yeah, certainly this, while this does allow for redevelopment on arterials, it does allow for local street options as well. And you see that in some of our other newer plans, such as the Broadway Plan, where we are locating increased density in, in off arterial areas. So to repeat your own words back to you, it is looking for opportunities for increased density off, not just including it on arterials, but having them on local streets as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Maloney. Seeing no one else on the queue, could I get a mover? The recommendation's moved by councillor Zhou, could I get a seconder? Seconded by councillor Claussen. Council discussion. Please, thank you. And I will start, I'll advance councillor Maloney.
Uh, no, sorry, I should have ta-
Okay.
I'm done, thanks.
Okay, we'll take you off. Sorry, we're gonna- Councillor Kirby Young, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. I appreciate the questions raised by the speakers and the clarifications from staff. It is sometimes a lot of intersecting policies and I, it is great to see how passionate people are about their neighbourhoods. I do think that this will provide much-needed housing. And what's unique about the site is that it doesn't have any displacement. I do know that people get used to sometimes using space as green space and how important that is in the city. And we're really working to try to advance and support that as we see growth and new neighbours coming into areas. And so sometimes it's, we have a site, it's an older existing building and then we worry about displacement. Sometimes we have a site where we don't have a building. And then people understandably get used to using the space. It is in excess of 100 new homes that are coming in and rental. I had the pleasure on, just a few days ago, I think it was on Monday, of attending groundbreaking for the first of, I think it's about six of Telus's sites that they're planning to the city of Vancouver when they're repurposing some of their real estate for community purposes for housing as they go through the transition from copper to fibre, which takes up less space. And the first one was in West Point Gray on Tolme Avenue and the groundbreaking for that happened. And so it is encouraging to sort of see leveraging the use of sites that were traditionally set aside for one purpose so that they can provide additional benefit in the city. I am, would encourage sort of neighbours to monitor the parking situation because it can require some calibration as that implementation happens. I do know that we're also making improvements for expediting buses along 49th. It's one of the ones that we've identified as part of the work the city of Vancouver is doing. And so we are finding that less people are relying on vehicles, but there are a lot of people that do need to have them. And I appreciate the challenges in the area. So if that is not working, I think would encourage folks to sort of let us know so that that can sort of be adjusted and worked as that comes along. But overall, I know that with a vacancy rate of 1%, and we're still striving towards getting to a three, which I think has been set as our goal in terms of a healthy vacancy rate in the city when rents sort of start to mitigate a bit more. For people that are trying to find the accommodation, that this housing will be welcomed. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kirby Young. Councillor Claussen.
Thanks very much. I just concur with some of the, the observations of councillor Kirby Young. But this is an area that I think is in, in much in need of new housing. I've been, once documented in, in some of my writing in the past, talking about the corner of 49th and Fraser, referring to it as downtown South Vancouver, arguably the most ethically diverse neighbourhood in our city. With that corner alone has, of the four corners, three of them have banks on, on them and giving an indication of the, how busy and how much commerce and how much small business. And we heard earlier from the executive director of the local Business Improvement Association also expressing support there. It's a, it's a really fantastic neighbourhood and, but it is, has been evolving over time. And this, this, this growth done properly, and I think the six, six-story form here is appropriate for the area. And knowing that both the number eight Fraser bus and the, the 49 bus are both incredibly, they're all, they're both articulated bus systems that deal with, move a lot of people in and out of the neighbourhood. So I can sort of see this being a very walkable neighbourhood with lots of close local shopping that will reduce car trips as well. So I think that this, this building in this new housing will eventually be embraced by the area and really add to the, to what is, when I feel is one of the most dynamic neighbourhoods in our city. So with that, those considerations and the fact that we have been moving forward with this, this, this type of housing on a number of different areas of the city, I'll be supporting this project. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Claussen. Seeing no further speakers, I'll call the questions. And if you could please vote on screen for those of you joining us online. Please use your crest on and please have your video on. And clerks, I'm not logged in, but I will take a vote assist in favour, please. Thank you, council, that passes unanimously. And that concludes this item, thank you. Just give everyone a moment to transition out. So we will be moving on to item two of our agenda, CD1, rezoning 2090 West First Avenue. Before we start, are there any conflicts of interest to declare? Okay, hearing none. Clerks, are you prepared to read the application and summary of correspondence?
This is an application by JTA Development Consultants to rezon 2090 West First Avenue from residential district to comprehensive development district. Permit the development of a 20-story mixed-use building containing 176 rental units with 20% of the residential floor area for below-market rental units and commercial space on the ground floor. A floor space ratio of 6.8 and a height of 65.1 metre with additional height for rooftop amenity space are proposed. General manager of planning, urban design and sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions set on the summary and recommendation. The yellow memo dated October 17, 2025, entitled CD1, rezoning 2090 West First Avenue, amendments to recommendation A. The following correspondence have been received since referral to public hearing. Three pieces in support and 41 pieces in opposition. This represents all correspondence received up to 5:00 PM today.
Uh, thank you clerks. And this will be our first call for speakers. Any speakers wishing to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by the participant code 1061445 pound before the close of the speakers' list. The phone number will be posted on X and displayed during the recess. There will be an opportunity for new speakers and the speakers to be heard at the end of the registered speakers' list. We have staff from Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability here to present the application and they have approximately 11 slides. Turn it over to you. Just let us know if you need a minute.
Yes, please, one second.
Go ahead.
Evening, council. My name is Luke Reynolds. I am the rezoning planner for this application and considered it under the Broadway Plan. Council, this application before you is accompanied with a yellow memo that notes the recently enacted R3, R4, R5 district schedules. The yellow memo specifies that the new zone for the site is R33. The site, children red, is located on the south side of West First Avenue at the east corner of Arbutus. The site is zone R33 and the surrounding area is a mixture of R33 and RM4. The property is currently developed with a three-story residential building with 35 rental units. Eligible tenants are protected under the enhanced tenant relocation and protection policy. Neighbourhood is undergoing significant change with a future subway station located 10-minute walk away at Arbutus and Broadway, which is scheduled to open in 2027. The site is well-served by public transit, bike routes, parks, childcare and community facilities. It is 750 metres away from the future Arbutus station, has bus service available for the number two route that runs along Cornwall Street and is four blocks away from five bus lines running along Fourth Avenue. The site is located in the Kisselino North, Area B sub-area. The plan permits 20-story market rental buildings with 20% of the residential floor area secured as below-market units and a maximum density of 6.5 FSR. The applicant is proposing a 20-story mixed-use tower with rooftop amenities. The project includes 176 units, of which 20% are below-market rental, as well as a commercial unit on the ground floor. A density of 6.8 FSR and a height of 65.1 metres are proposed. This table compares below-market rents and market rents by unit type. Starting rents for the below-market units are to be discounted 20% below citywide average market rents. Below-market unit rent, sorry, the below-market units range from $1,284 for a studio and $2,819 for a three-bed. A virtual Q and A period was held from April 2nd to April 15th, 2025, and 225 pieces of feedback were received. and 225 pieces of feedback were received. Support was expressed for the housing supply and affordability, transit-oriented development and neighbourhood renewal and mixed-use benefits. Concerns were related to height, scale and character, shadowing and views and traffic and parking. Regarding the proposed height, scale and character, the application is consistent with the intent of the Broadway Plan, which helps provide new secured rental housing with below-market housing in close proximity to transit routes, services and shopping amenities in the neighbourhood. Regarding shadowing, views and livability, the project does not shadow parks nor public schoolyards from the spring-to-fall equinoxes between 10am to 4pm. Additionally, it is not impacting a protected public view and critical infrastructure and services will be expanded in accordance with the public benefit strategy of the Broadway Plan to minimise impacts on existing residents and neighbours. Lastly, regarding traffic and parking, the application meets the requirements of the parking bylaw and will need to provide a transportation demand management plan at the time of development permit. Staff anticipate an overall reduction of vehicle trips with the completion of the subway. The public benefits of this application consist of 176 market rental units with 20% of the residential floor area for below-market rental, DCLs and a public art contribution. The applicant has also requested 100% waiver of the citywide DCLs for the residential floor area. In conclusion, this proposal aligns with the Broadway Plan and advances the city's rental housing targets. Staff recommend approval of this application subject to the conditions outlined in appendix B of the report. Staff and the applicant team are available to answer any and all questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll now ask if the applicant would like to make a presentation.
Thank you, Chair, Deputy Mayor and Council. We'd also like to thank staff for all their work to bring this proposal forward. My name is James Todd, Principal of JTA Development Consultants. And I'm here this evening as applicant for 2090 West First Avenue with our architect Studio One Architecture to answer any questions. We appreciate the opportunity to speak and we want to highlight how this proposal directly supports the vision for Kitzalano. The plan sets out a clear direction for this neighbourhood to evolve in a way that is walkable, vibrant, inclusive and transit-connected while maintaining the character, greenery and human-scale qualities that make Kitzalano special. Our application has been shaped around exactly those goals. We are delivering new purpose-built rental housing, supporting an emphasis on increasing rental supply, especially near rapid transit. As Kitzalano prepares for the Broadway Line opening, adding more long-term rental homes close to transit is one of the most effective ways to improve housing access and reduce transportation emissions. The proposal has been designed to be sensitive to neighbourhood character, recognising the importance of maintaining leafy, walkable residential streets and a strong sense of neighbourhood continuity. Our proposal incorporates high-quality materials, setbacks and a form that transitions carefully to adjacent buildings. Public realm improvements including landscaping and more accessible pedestrian edge with, which will reinforce the commitment to green, people-focused streets. For shadowing view impacts and effects on public realm, the proposal in referral report demonstrates that we comply with solar access requirements and that the proposal will not shadow the public schoolyard or nearby park. We are committed to working further on rooftop design refinements and facade articulation to reduce view impacts and maintain a sense of openness. The proposal supports more inclusive housing options, including below-market and secured rental housing to support a diversity of residents. This project contributes to citywide objectives by expanding rental choices close to local shops, community services and transit. Increasing supply in a context-responsive manner is essential to ease pressure on the neighbourhood's ageing rental stock. Adding housing here reinforces a complete community vision. The proposal will also follow the enhanced TRPP. Tenants have had at least nine touchpoints since application, including notification, the all-tenant meeting, various updates and the city's eligibility letter and needs assessment survey. Tenants will also be offered during interim housing options within the owner's existing portfolio with the same landlord within the same neighbourhood at the tenant's choice. Meaning tenants will be able to remain in the same neighbourhood in interim housing before being welcomed back to the new building in a new unit. In short, we feel this application is a strong example of neighbourhood-appropriate growth with more rental homes and improved public realm, a respectful fit within the neighbourhood character and direct support for transit-oriented living. We respectfully ask council for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council to staff or to the applicant noting this is the only opportunity for council to ask questions of the applicant? Okay, seeing anyone? This is the, I'll do the second call for speakers then. If there's any speakers who wish to speak to this item, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by the participant code 106145, sorry, 1445 pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be displayed on X and displayed during the recess. We will now hear from the public. Any registered speakers in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium when your name is called. Phone-in speakers will be unmuted when your name is called. Speakers will have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. Our first speaker is speaker number one, Susan Hines. Susan, welcome.
Thank you very much. Yes, my name is Susan Hines. Thank you for allowing me here. I am resident of West First Avenue. I am located one block east of the proposed application, the building. I have been there for almost 30 years, five years as a renter and then the remaining as an owner. I am here primarily to speak to a couple of my concerns. I do not support the proposal as it's currently set out. I just wanted to point out a couple of things which may be in conflict with some of the things that I've heard already. Currently, right now, West First Avenue is a mixed-use, it's a dense neighbourhood, not dense as in 28 stories or 20-odd stories, but it is dense in terms of multi-use. There's apartments, there's condos, there's townhouses, there's single-family dwellings. The street itself has parking on either side of it. So currently, we really run on West First Avenue as a one-lane street where you have to stop on either side. And what's happened and has actually accelerated since we had the bike lanes. I'm a proponent of bike lanes. But since we had the bike lanes put in at York and Cypress, we basically have, excuse my expression, Mexican standoffs on every street, including my own. So right now, without the additional density that would come with the 20-odd stories, we currently are dealing with on a regular basis, cars parked on either end trying to shoot through this one lane with wonderful cursing, swearing and actually getting out now and almost coming to fisticuffs. I have shared this with my, on 811. I have called several times and actually just put the phone out just to let the, you know, caller hear the fun that we get to experience on West First Avenue. I just anticipate that this will continue. I recognise that there's public transit and this is all part of the Broadway Plan and that's already been decided. But in terms of that density and that additional density, that is going to put increased pressure on West First Avenue. I heard that there's schools and daycares. I have two children. We have gone through the elementary and secondary. Similar to the mayor, my kids went to Kits High School. And I can tell you both Henry Hudson and the surrounding elementary schools are at full capacity. And the Kits High School has been at full capacity for years. So I take issue with the thought that there's schools. In terms of amenities, we also are having challenges in the neighbourhood. There's no additional community centres. The pool over at the aquatic centre on the other side of the bridge, as you all know, is going to get shrunk down from 50 to 25. So I'm not seeing any increased amenities. And then I have to say, the elephant in the room in our neighbourhood at that end of Kits, at that West First area, is Sunak. We have the Three Towers about to come on, which is a huge rental structure. The whole thing is rental. I get it, it's market rental. And there is, I think, which is great, is some lower income in this building. But that neighbourhood that you are about to add, both, you know, potentially, I'm sure, this 20-story, there's also another one at the next block over at First NU that there's a proposal underway. And that also is 20-something stories. So I'm trying to understand where our neighbourhood, which as I said, is dense already, it is, I have social housing across the street from my house. I'm very supportive of that. But how the livability and the neighbourhood is going to be maintained in what is an increasingly dense, overly dense, I would say. I would love like the last group to have only six stories coming in in our neighbourhood instead of the 20-odd stories. So that is a huge issue for us. And the other thing I would note about this before my time is up is there is plan for commercial on the main floor of this building. It is not a commercial section of West First Avenue where the proposed building is going to be housed. There is commercial east of Cypress and First and there is commercial along U Street. But right there where that building is proposed is actually where there's a roundabout. And as I said, it is very dense in terms of traffic that will not be calmed just miraculously because we all of a sudden have a skytrain running around, what, on, up on Broadway. And there is also the question of, as I said, the additional density that you have going the whole way up to Broadway and past. I just think this small portion of the neighbourhood is under almost excessive density because of the various Sunak, this, the next block and every single street, the whole way up to Broadway and beyond.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
For sharing your views. I gave you a little bit of extra time there. I believe that speaker two is withdrawn. And then we have speaker three, Renee Peddy on phone, on the phone. Do we have Renee?
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Renee. Just before you start speaking, can you confirm if you're a resident of Vancouver?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, you have five minutes.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Yes, my name is Renee Peddy and I think the council for this time. I am a long-term resident of Vancouver and Kitzalano. And I am unfortunately opposed to this proposal. I want to be clear that I am for building more housing and density, especially more affordable housing. But in a way that doesn't overwhelm the current infrastructure. I echo speaker number one's concern around engineering, roadways and pedestrian safety and cyclist safety. Regardless of the findings that the proposal suggests that this will not impact parking or traffic, as someone who lives here and witnesses this, I can't say I agree. And it makes me question how these positive findings come about in the first place. My concern is one of safety due to the existing parking and road infrastructure. There are already several concerns regarding road safety along Arbutus Street alone. It has become a detour that many vehicles use to cut through to access West Forest, Broadway and Kitzalano Beach, especially in busier touristy months. Rather than driving to McDonald or Burrard Streets, Arbutus seems to be the cut-through. And people using Arbutus to access these main attractions and arteries, I've often witnessed drivers driving through as though it is a main street and often do not obey parking signage, speed limits or stop signs or right-of-way a combination of four-way stops, roundabouts and bike routes that are along Arbutus. The bike route that I refer to is the one that runs along York Avenue. I live on the corner of Arbutus and York and I hear the daily shouts of near misses when vehicles run the stop signs and almost hit cyclists of any age. There have been several cyclists hit that I have been witness to myself at this intersection alone. This is not to mention the father and his five-year-old daughter that were hit and seriously injured as a result of a two-car accident at the intersection of Cornwall and Arbutus, which is just two blocks north of this proposed rezoning. Building high-rises as high as 20 stories along Arbutus between Forest and Cornwall avenues, especially with commercial business space on the bottom floor, only encourages more traffic that the street is not engineered to sustain. Street parking is already strained in this part of Kitzalano year-round, let alone in the summer months when people from all over the lower maintenance come to enjoy our beautiful neighbourhood. While I understand there will be three levels of parking available to tenants, that is not enough for the amount of units in this building. And regardless of the access to public transit, people still need vehicles. Canada and Vancouver is still a very vehicle-centric environment. Commercial space is unnecessary at this location and as Susan suggested, is not zoned for this area. It happens all too often where delivery vehicles don't respect road rules and continuously park in spots they are not supposed to, blocking already congested traffic, especially when it is one single lane. The strain on parking and increased traffic in this narrow hill of a street is not designed for, will lead to drivers paying less attention to pedestrians and cyclists. As I said at the start, I do support development. We need more housing, we need affordable housing, including in Kitzalano, so that people can keep enjoying our neighbourhood. But it has to be done with logic. The location of this rezoning will contribute to pedestrian and cyclist safety concerns where there are already too many. There are so many other locations that taller residential buildings could be proposed for that are safer. I'm sure there are reasons that I haven't had the opportunity to research and look into where certain property gets approved or proposed for varying projects, be they residential or commercial. But I propose in response that the next time a luxury car dealership wants to be built in Kitzalano, that some thought goes into building market, under value-market rental properties instead. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much for calling in this evening. I think that was the end of our speakers this far. I'll just double-check if there's anyone else in chambers or on the line who wish to speak to this item. Anyone on the line? No. Nope. Okay. In that case, this will be the third and final call for speakers. If there are any speakers for this item, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by the participant code 1061445 pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be posted on X and displayed during the recess. Council, we will now take a two-minute recess. Um, do we have any additional speakers in chamber or on the line?
I'm just checking. Team, is there anybody else for item number two? No.
No?
I don't see anybody in the chamber.
Okay, in that case, I'm going to close the speakers' list. Clerks, there were a large volume of public comments received on this item since 5:00 PM today.
Less than five.
Okay, thank you. In that case, I'm going to close receipt with the public comments. Does the applicant have any closing comments? Do staff have any closing comments?
No comments at this time, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, do you have any final questions for staff? You do? Thank you. Place yourself on the queue. All advanced, Counselor Claussen.
Thanks, Chair. Just curious, based upon the renderings, what the potential usage for the commercial space would be? Just looking at it right now, it almost looks like coffee shop style. But is there, was there some discussion around what the commercial might be on this location, given it's the first commercial in that block?
Thank you for the question, Counselor. The applicant isn't able to speak at this moment, but with the Broadway Plan encouraging retail on the ground floor of these developments, staff anticipate that they are a local-serving retail. So it could be cafe, it could be food, it could be small businesses. It's open to a variety of uses to serve the local neighbourhood.
Okay, great, thanks very much.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Claussen. Counselor Orr, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. Question through the chair to staff. Can you talk a little bit about the concerns that were raised around active transportation, in particular, the sort of conflicts that we've been seeing between drivers and cyclists in the area, and if there's been anything done to mitigate that?
Thank you for the question. I will pass this off to Daniel Klein, who's online.
Hi, Daniel Klein, Development and Major Projects and Engineering Services. Thanks for the question. So that's a little outside the scope of this rezoning. So I'm not personally familiar with if there's been any discussion of that. But typically, this type of issue is managed through a separate process. So that would be either the residents identifying issues, which it sounds like they have, and contacting the city through 311 or other methods. And then also staff do review kind of active transportation through our planning work and other processes. So just a little bit outside of the scope in terms of this project specifically. But there are mechanisms through which we can take a look at that.
So just sort of general kind of looking at that. As well, while I have you online, I might as well ask too, there's concerns about people using our Butis as a sort of cut-through. I did look on Google Maps, and there's traffic calming already. But if you could speak to, you know, people using our Butis as a shortcut?
Yeah, thanks so much again. Kind of a similar response. This is typically addressed through separate programs. And with traffic calming in place, city staff can also evaluate that, especially, as I said, in response to comments from the public and also our reviews. There's also the Neighbourhood Traffic Management Programme that is underway, that isn't, I don't believe, currently in this neighbourhood. But that's a programme through which staff look at, especially this type of rat-running and other considerations, look at traffic calming, street closures, et cetera. So in generalities, this is something that can be addressed and also prioritised through feedback from the public and safety concerns.
Okay, great. Moving now to tenant relocation. Looks like 34 out of 35 have chosen to return to the new building, which is fantastic. It's a great percentage of tenants returning. The below-market is about 35. So pretty much all the returning tenants will take up the below-market. Is that correct?
Thank you for the question. We'll pass this on to Yvonne in Housing.
We have them on the line? Or no? That question?
Hi there, this is Sarah Robyn from Housing. Yeah, there's currently 35 tenant, sorry, rental units on the site, and 34 tenants are eligible to return to the new building. But they do have that window to make that decision about returning till closer to occupancy of the new building. So it's hard to kind of assess exactly how many tenants would return at this point. But yes, that's correct. There's about 35 below-market rental units.
Okay, what's the size difference? Are there the units that they're going to be, would they move back in to be smaller or around the same size?
Yeah, that's a good question. Thank you for that. I don't have the exact kind of dimensions of the unit sizes in the existing building. But yeah, I mean typically newer buildings are, you know, smaller in terms of the unit type, just in terms of the reality of the market. But there are also, you know, benefits as well with the newer building as well, in terms of amenities and typically kind of in-suite laundry and other functions of a newer building. But yeah, I don't have the exact sort of floor area comparison.
Okay, and elevator too, and accessibility and things like that, I assume?
Yeah, exactly.
All right, that's pretty much my time, thanks.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Orr. I'm just going to add myself to the queue. I just have a quick question for staff. Recognizing that both the speakers who addressed the rezoning application did raise the issues around traffic congestion, safety considerations. I'm curious if, because I heard some of those concerns were registered with 311 and so on, could one of our staff commit to follow up on that and maybe follow up with the speakers on that specific? Because it seems to be, it's been discussed in the context of the rezoning, but also seems to be an issue now without a new building there at all. So is there someone on staff who could commit to some follow-up on that?
Thank you for the question. We'll pass it back off to Daniel.
Thank you.
Hi, thanks so much, Daniel Klein, Development and Major Projects and Engineering. Yeah, that's something we can take back. I'm not sure if we have contact information for the speakers exactly. Is that something we should do through back to councillors or?
Probably do it through the clerks if they registered to speak. Clerks, correct me if I'm wrong with that? We have contact information for speakers who registered to speak today. The speakers who spoke to this rezoning, we have their contact information. They would have registered online. Okay, just for engineering for follow-up. Okay, um, council, seeing no one else on the queue, can I get someone to move a motion? Recommendation. And with, I think, the yellow memo. Counselor Joe, moved? Get a seconder? Counselor Claussen? Uh, council, debate and discussion. Please put yourselves on the queue. Okay, I'm seeing no one on the queue. Checking with anyone online. In that case, I will call the question. For those of you online, please make sure your video is enabled to vote. And please vote online, council. Again, clerks, I'll take a vote, assist in favour, please. Uh, thank you, council, that passes unanimously. Council, we'll be moving to item three on our agenda, rezoning for 14011455 East 49th Avenue. I'll just give everyone a moment to clear the room, chamber. Okay, so council, before we begin, are there any conflicts of interest for this item? This is 14011455 East 49th Avenue. Hearing done, I'll get the clerks to read the application the correspondence received.
This is an application by Refriar Architecture to be zone 1401 to 1455 East 49th Avenue from residential district to commercial district to residential rental district to permit the development of a six-story mixed-use rental building, a floor space ratio of 3.5 is proposed. General manager's planning urban design sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation. And the two yellow memos stated October 22nd and 29th, 2025, entitled "Rzoning 1401 to 1455 East 49th Avenue" for information, and "Rzoning 1401 to 1455 East 49th Avenue: Updated Enrollment Projections" for information. The following correspondence have been received since referral to public hearing, 18 pieces in support, 104 pieces in opposition, and this represents all correspondence received at 5:00 PM today.
Thank you very much, clerks, I appreciate that. Do we have quorum? I'm just confirming. Okay. Counselor Meiser, can you just enable your video? Please?
Hi, yes, sorry about that.
Nope, that's all right, thank you. Okay, we're back. This is the first call for speakers. Any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council? Please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by the participant code 1061445-POUND before the close of the speakers' list. Phone number will be posted on X and displayed during the recess. There will be an opportunity for new speakers and missed speakers to be heard at the end of the registered speakers' list. We have staff from Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability here to present the application. They have roughly 13 slides. I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Chi Chan. I'm the rezoning planner for this application, which is being considered under the secured rental policy. The site outlined in red is located at the intersection of Knight Street and East 49th Avenue. The site is owned by the Vancouver School District and was part of the Sir Sanford Fleming Elementary School site, which stretches the whole block up to East 47th Avenue. In 2016, as part of the seismic mitigation programme, the school was reconstructed on the north portion of the site, and it's shown here on the left side of this photo. This allowed the Vancouver School Board to consider declaring the southern portion of the property as surplus to the educational needs of the district, a process known as disposition. School district staff undertook their own public engagement in 2021 on disposition, after which VSB voted to proceed with the disposition process. The city did not have a role in this process. Following the disposition process, VSB finalized a 99-year lease with the developer, Vittori Lanark Holdings, who is now making this rezoning application before council this evening. Just a note to council, there is a yellow memo included in this agenda package that summarises this information. Consistent with the intent of the secured rental policy, the site shown in red is located near several parks and community spaces. The site is also well-served by bus service along Knight Street and East 49th Avenue, and close to three bike routes. The rezoning-enabling policy for this application is the Secured Rental Policy, or SRP, which encourages construction of new purpose-built rental housing in Vancouver. The SRP aligns with rental housing goals of the Housing Vancouver Strategy and the complete neighbourhood goals of the Vancouver Plan. Updates to the SRP were approved by council in 2021 to create the residential rental zones to which this application is applying for rezoning. Resonings to rental or RR district schedules follow a simplified rezoning process that establishes clarity on permitted height, use, and density. The RR schedules include a comprehensive design guidelines with specific building designs to be reviewed during a future development permit process. Under the secured rental policy, this site is eligible for rezoning to one of the two mixed-use rental zones shown on this table. The applicant is choosing to pursue the RR3B district schedule. Under RR3B, they are allowed to proceed with a six-story mixed-use building, an FSR up to 3.5, and requires that 20% of the residential floor area be provided for below-market rental units. This application is providing below-market rents ranging from $1,300 to $2,800 per month, and market rents ranging from $1,800 to $3,800 per month. This slide shows that the average household incomes, the average household incomes that those rents would serve. Note that as part of the lease agreement between the developer and VSB, school, district teachers, and staff will be offered priority access to vacant units. A total of 409 submissions were received during the public consultation period on this application. Support was expressed for housing and new residents who could support local businesses, density in this transit and density in this transit accessible location. Concerns were expressed regarding the loss of school land, concerns about traffic, safety, and parking. In response to the loss of school land, as previously mentioned, VSB deemed the site as surplus in 2021. Council, please note that the disposition process of lands deemed access to the school district's educational needs is not the subject of this evening's rezoning application. The disposition process is separate and independent from the city and was made by an elected VSB. In terms of the loss of school land with respect to the school capacity, the school district has options to reduce pressures on schools. They include restricting out-of-catchment enrollment, placing students at nearby schools with capacity, maintaining waitlists, adjusting grades, adjusting grades and attendance at schools, relocating or consolidating district programmes, and adjusting catchment boundaries. Just a further note to council, in the same first yellow memo that was attached to this public hearing agenda, Vancouver School District provided supplementary information to support this rezoning application. It presents information about how the school district develops enrollment projections, what the current enrollment projections are citywide, and for the catchment areas around Fleming, and how they manage capacity and enrollment. A second memo was published as part of the public hearing agenda as well. It updates the capacity estimates for the Fleming School Site in staff's referral report based on the new enrollment projections provided by VSB. The enrollment projections report from which this information is drawn is also appended to the public hearing agenda. Regarding traffic, safety, and parking, the site is well-served by transit and bike routes. Furthermore, a comprehensive suite of traffic, safety, and traffic calming measures have already been installed over the last several years around the school. Those include speed humps, pedestrian signals with countdown timers that accommodate children's walking speed, automatic pedestrian phases, sidewalks along all streets, and specific left-turn signals to reduce vehicle traffic collision risks. The public benefits accruing from this application are the secured rental housing units, as well as a DCL contribution of over $1.4 million. In conclusion, this proposal meets the intent of the city policy by delivering mixed-use rental building. Staff note that this rezoning application is about whether a six-story rental building proposal is appropriate for this site, and not with the issue of school disposition. Staff support this rezoning application, and staff and the applicant team are available to respond to questions. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Would the applicant like to make a presentation?
Good evening, council and deputy mayor. Thank you for having us here. My name is Dan Fenero. I'm the president of Vittori Developments. We're a family-owned corporation that is also a certified B corporation. We've been building quality rentals throughout the Lower Mainland for the past 20 years. And I'm just here to answer any questions that council may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for either staff or the applicant? And just again, noting that this is your only time to ask questions of the applicant. Okay, Counselor Claussen, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks very much, Chair.
Um, a very interesting, um, uh, proposal on the, on the, on the floor here. Uh, this is a, uh, area of South Vancouver that I got to know well. It, across the street was probably the best place to buy flowers in the neighborhood for many years, um, when I lived in Champlain Heights. Um, the, um, I've been watching this site, uh, the, uh, taking down the old, uh, school building, which was, um, uh, closer to, you know, a very high-traffic area with Knight and Fraser, um, uh, truck traffic going up back and forth there. Um, but the, um, uh, Forty-Ninth has become a really important arterial for moving, uh, people back and forth, so I'm just kind of, um, I, I, you know, we, we're not getting into the disposition, we've been, uh, made that very clear from our staff here. Um, I, I do think this is a, um, to, to turn this into, into, uh, housing, um, to hem that, that entire corner is, is good, but I, is, um, I'm, um, uh, I'm curious about, um, uh, the, the ninety-nine-year lease portion of this one. This turns into kind of a public benefit that, uh, serves the, the, the school board. I know you're probably not allowed to give us any commercial details, but, uh, can you, can you just comment on sort of what you perceive as the, uh, the arrangement, uh, between you and, uh, V S B?
Sure, I can speak to that. So, we, uh, entered into the ninety-nine-year lease with the Vancouver School Board. Um, at the end of the lease, the land goes back to the school board. Uh, so we think that this is the best possible scenario, um, as we're not actually taking the land away, um, and it will be restored to the original state and back to the school board to be able to use for whatever means they have after the lease ends.
Okay, uh, well, we can only imagine what it'll look like in a hundred years, but, um,
Probably won't be here.
There's quite a hardy tree canopy on Forty-Ninth, is that gonna be retained as part of the development?
Um, I'm sorry.
These are street trees, I'm just being clear.
Yeah, I believe all the street trees are being retained.
Yeah.
Um, they're, you know, and any tree that would not be retained would have to be replaced as per city policy.
I see, our staff, uh, did you want to respond to that as well? Okay. Um, all right, uh, I'll, I'll leave it there, I think I have a good idea of what's going on there, thank you.
Thank you councillor Claussen, uh, councillor Orr, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks so much. Um, so, yeah, you, uh, you mentioned that we, we're not supposed to talk about the disposition, but the memo does talk about the disposition, I'm sorry, I'm talking to staff, um, for, for staff. Um, so we're passing the yellow memo, which has, uh, talks about disposition, but we can't ask about this, this part of the yellow memo, or we can't talk about this part of the yellow memo, or?
Um, I wanna, thank you for the question, I wanna stress that, that, that's provided for information, for background information, uh, the, you know, certainly council can talk about it, but I want to note that questions or any sort of review about that, that process that was made by a different elected body, uh, was, is outside of the purview of council according, because it's made by another elected body under the School Act of British Columbia.
For example, I shouldn't ask if we got a good value for the ninety-nine-year lease, that's kind of out of, if the value was good, the ninety-nine-year lease, it's a good value for that land.
That would be beyond the scope of this.
That would be, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, just about the yellow memo, did, uh, who, like, who gets access to this? Is this online for, for residents to look at? It's quite a hefty memo, I don't think I've seen a, a memo this big before. Um, do residents of, of the area get access to this, or is it just?
Uh, so, the yellow memos have been published on the public, um, public hearing website as part of the agenda, that has been available for residents for over at least two weeks.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, uh, there, and there are two yellow memos as well.
Okay, uh, excellent, um, so, there was mention that, um, there was mention that, uh, some of the units were, uh, going to be available for teachers. I've heard from the, uh, Vancouver Elementary and Adult Educators Society that that's not really what, uh, teachers want, that's what they've heard from their members, they don't want to live on the same school grounds as where they teach, but, um, can you comment to that at all, or?
Certainly, the tenet, teneting decisions will be left to the developer at the time of occupancy, it's certainly their, they will act as landlord. Um, uh, it's just been an offer that's part of this proposal that they've suggested that the developer, in the agreement between developer and V S B, that they would offer right of first refusal to those teachers. Um, there is the possibility that the teachers could live there, but not necessarily teach at that school, they could teach at another school.
Oh, okay, I see, I get it.
Well, just to remind council, just as well, sorry councillor Orr, pause your time, it's just that we are, um, in terms of deliberating, we can only deliberate on the information presented to council in terms of correspondence, in terms of the reports and memos, but, um, if it's not captured in that, private conversations and things like that, we're not, not everyone's privy to, so, just flagging that.
Oh, okay, um, private, private conversations. Oh, regarding, like, if I've heard publicly, I was, it was public, it was public that I heard it, it wasn't private.
Okay, thank you, thanks for clarifying that.
Yeah, no, I, I, no, it wasn't, it was just.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, uh, what was on the site, uh, previously? What, what is currently on the site? Is this the one where it was a basketball court?
Uh, yes, the basketball courts, uh, are currently on the site.
Okay, so, um, so the kids don't have a basketball court at that school now?
Yes, unfortunately, no.
Okay, um, I've heard anecdotally also that the, that there could be portables on the school, I know in two thousand thirty-one, this, the, the school projections are, are gonna go down, but they could also lose that feel, if I understand correctly, have you heard that too, or?
I have not heard that, I'm sorry.
Uh, uh, that's the end of my questions, maybe I'll hop back on with my remaining time.
Thank you councillor Orr, uh, councillor Maloney.
Thanks, um, my question's for staff, thank you. Um, so, um, what kind of zoning, um, is, characterizes the surrounding area of the school?
Um, so, generally a mix of, there are, there are some commercial zones right around this entire corner, is a commercial C one zone, so local serving commercial, and it's predominantly an R one one zone, so currently the R one one permits up to four to six multiplex, but the development is typically single-family at this time.
Thanks very much.
Thank you councillor Maloney, councillor Zhou.
Chair, thanks, chair, so, uh, uh, this is a question for staff, do we know the enrollment rate in this, in this school?
Um, sorry, thanks for the question, uh, you're asking about the enrollment rate?
Yes, so like, are they fully utilized in this, in this school?
Uh, so, according to information provided to staff from the V S B, uh, as of September of this year, um, they're almost fully subscribed, but they do list that, uh, there are approximately seven, um, about ten spaces available for grades one through seven. There's no waitlist at the school, and, uh, ten spaces available from grades one through seven.
Okay, so, a couple of years ago, city passed the, uh, a motion to increase the density in the, uh, school neighborhood, uh, where, where the school has, uh, underutilized. Would this, uh, site align with that, uh, motion?
We are, we have been considering this application under the secured rental policy.
Okay.
And through the secured rental policy, it certainly looks at, uh, arterials, commercial zones, zones in, in proximity to parks, schools, and, uh, commercial areas. So, this application meets the intent of that policy, which is why we are considering here today.
Okay, la- la- last question, I know we are not supposed to talk about disposition, but, you know, looking at the speakers, I think they will have a lot of question about, uh, the dis- disposition, so, uh, uh, for the public, raise any concern or any question about disposition, what is the best platform for them to do at Vancouver's school board meeting, or?
Uh, yes, the disposition is, is the responsibility of the school board, so, I, I know that the public has made, um, comment already at school board, but that is the appropriate form.
Okay.
Here, we are considering the merits of the rezoning for our six-story building.
Okay, we don't know when V S B is gonna talk about this project?
Uh, pardon?
We know when the V S B will discuss about this project, so the, uh, public speaker can stand up, uh, to express their.
The dis- the choi- the decision regarding the disposition of the school site has already been made by V S B. Uh, so that's a pass.
I'll be, I'll address the speakers before they speak about this, about what's within the parameters of the rezoning.
Okay.
And, and again, any queries should be directed to V S B.
Okay, that's all my questions, thanks, chair.
Thank you. I don't have my mic on. Wish to speak to council, please call toll-free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by participant code one zero six one four four five pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be posted on X and displayed during the recess. We will now hear from the public. Any registered speakers in council chamber, please come forward to the podium when your name is called. Phone-in speakers will be unmuted when your name is called. Speakers will have five minutes to make their comments, and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. Um, and just before I move to our first speaker, I, um, just for anyone who's in the gallery, anyone online, I will just, again, remind you, uh, that we are not debating the disposition of this property, it's, as we heard from staff, it was done through a process by the Vancouver School Board, um, and so we are only to be addressing the merit of this rezoning application. Um, and I will be firm on that, because, uh, we have no role in the disposition, and so, if there are concerns around that process, then you can address the Vancouver School Board, but we are just dealing, uh, with that disposed land and the rezoning application itself. And with that, I will call on our first speaker, Byron Chang, um, and I understand, Byron, you have a PowerPoint, is that correct?
Yes, it's already been sent in.
Okay, and we'll just get the clerks to bring that up. Uh, you have five minutes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Byron, and I'm a resident of Vancouver, and I oppose this rezoning on East Forty-Ninth. Thanks for the opportunity to speak today, I feel like I'm in a unique position to speak as I have an interest on many levels. First, I'm a resident, I live down the block from Philip Fleming Elementary and can face the potential development site. Parent, my youngest son Cameron is at the daycare at the school, and Connor is in grade two at Fleming. I'm also a volunteer, I'm the popcorn guy at our events at school, I'm also the vice-chair of our pack. I'm also a teacher, twenty years of experience, I have a master's degree and training in outdoor education. My focus, uh, is on open green space and adequate open landscape areas. Many of this, uh, city of Vancouver and V S B plans documents, there's a lot of guidance about open green space and adequate landscaped areas, they include what you see over here. Next slide. This is the proposed site by a V S B, and this is their rendering. Green space looks nice. Next slide. However, this is what it actually looks like. The urban forest strategy is to include public parks and open green spaces. I asked, does this look like open green spaces as outlined by any of the bylaws and action plans by the city and the V S B? Next. Here are some facts. Outdoor green space is there to improve physical and mental wellbeing and an important part of making a healthy city for everyone to live thriving. That's in your urban forest strategy. Fact, there are twenty-two trees and ten planters on the potential rezoning site that will likely be removed. Fact, no part of the Fleming School Site has green space that is flat. Any green space that has grass is on a hill. Fact, when our kids need to go to sports day, they have to walk to Gordon Park by David Thompson, just so they can use their grass field. Next slide. South Vancouver, fact, that South Vancouver is identified as disproportionately impacted in an area of high need of resources, and identified as having some of the lowest per-capita green space in Vancouver, in your action plan, the Vancouver Plan. Fact, the school recently notified families of an increase in problematic behaviors from students. Fact, I called nine-one-one when I witnessed two youth throwing rocks and breaking windows at Fleming Elementary. Fact, there are at least eighteen broken windows and doors at the site due to vandalism right now, I invite you to go for a visit. Fact, I personally see how the lack of physical activity, lack of outdoor time and opportunity, impacts the moods of and behaviors of youth, both in my own children and in my role as an educator. Fact, schools identify emotional wellbeing as being a major and growing concern in our youth. Fact, one of our best solutions to our mental health and wellbeing is having green space, your urban forest strategy. Next slide. Our community needs more access to green space and outdoor space, not less. The recent vandalism by our desperate community is asking us, "Help!" Are we brave enough to listen and act? While housing is important, we need a better plan for this site. We need a plan to accomplish adequate, adequate green and outdoor spaces for our underserved community, we need spaces for our community to enjoy the outdoors, places where residents can engage in constructive play rather than destructive behaviors. You need to oppose this rezoning because it does not meet the strategic needs of the city and the school board with respect to green space and open landscape spaces. We are not given the adequate green space that our disproportionately impacted area where we are in a high need of resources. Next slide. You need to do this, you need to support the building of a grass field and resurface the play spaces for our community. We need help, we need positive play to keep our neighborhood and community safe. Because you know, if you build it, they will come. Thank you.
Thank you, Byron. Just a reminder, we're, no clapping in the gallery. Uh, Melanie Chang, Chair, Vancouver District Parent Advisory Council. Welcome, Melanie. And you have a, uh, five minutes.
Thank you, thank you very much, um, I'm grateful to be here. Um, my name is Melanie Chang, I'm a Vancouver resident, I'm here today to oppose rezoning of the Fleming Basketball Courts. Um, Fleming Elementary is a new replacement school that was built in two thousand twenty for three hundred and ninety-eight students. The school was constructed in a way that there's no room for expansion. The disposition of the Fleming Basketball Courts may be a V S B decision, but the capacity is relevant here for city council. The time that Fleming was opened as a school, it was already at capacity, and today it is at capacity as well. After this rezoning, there'll be no space left for expansion except on the school field. Um, the rezoning application for the basketball courts is based on the V S B's two thousand twenty long-range facilities plan, and that plan didn't account for growth from housing development. It relied on a ten-year enrollment forecast, which predicted a decline in student enrollment. The city's referral report showed that Fleming's capacity would decline. It stated that Fleming would be at seventy-six percent capacity in two thousand thirty-one, which is entirely incorrect. The June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five V S B report, which I uploaded to your system, uses the Metro Vancouver twenty-to-thirty-year projections, which should be relied on instead. I uploaded that report so that you could see that data. Page one hundred and one of that report shows that while there are three hundred and ninety-eight seats at Fleming, the youth population in the catchment is projected to have six hundred and forty-six children in twenty years. Based on those numbers, with an eighty-five percent capture rate, the school will be at a hundred and thirty-five percent capacity. We've just heard this evening that there's a new development blocks away on Chester Street, blocks away from Fleming Elementary. We know that there's gonna be significant densification there that is not accounted for in the V S B's two thousand twenty long-range facility plan. The Metro Vancouver numbers, which I just quoted, of six hundred and forty-six children in twenty years, includes that development. We need housing, but we also need spaces for students, and Fleming Elementary's basketball courts would be a space where you could put a modular unit. The twenty-year projection is relevant, and it's necessary to consider it because the twenty-year housing needs projections guide and inform the official community plan. The data in the city's referral report for Fleming doesn't account for the current twenty-year growth projections, which are issued by the V S B, and that is six hundred and forty-six children in twenty years. Section five sixty-two point one of the Vancouver Charter also applies to city council, and it requires the city to consult with the school board in developing or amending the official development plan. The city must seek the school board's input on actual and anticipated school facility needs, and you have an obligation to look at the current data dated June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five, issued by the V S B. Families are continually making this case for safe and accessible spots for their local school. We need transparent and coordinated facility planning, and it doesn't appear that we're getting that, and I'm very concerned, and I'm asking for a review. This plan This plan does not make sense. I feel that decisions are being made behind closed doors. Our tax dollars are being spent on subdividing and downsizing school sites instead of planning for growth. We need housing and we need schools too. This will cost us more in the future when the land is needed for enrolling student spaces or public amenities in this growing area. Families at Fleming are struggling to get a spot in their local school now. It will only get worse in the future. These decisions to subdivide and rezone school land are permanent. Once it's gone, it is gone. So I'm asking this decision to be paused. I'm asking for a revaluation of the data to reflect Metro Vancouver twenty-year projections in accordance with Vancouver Charter and the intent of the provincial legislation for densification and community planning. Thank you.
Thank you Melanie. Speaker number three, Heman Metta, Chair Fleming Elementary Parent Advisory Council in person. Yes, go ahead, Counselor Kirby Young. Just one moment.
Just one moment. I have a quick point of procedure. I know that the speakers are very passionate about the school decision, but I'm just really trying to delineate between council's responsibility today and the previous decision for sale or subdivision by the school board is really not in front of council today, nor is it our jurisdiction. Our decision is with respect to the application for the housing application on the site. And so I'm just wondering if we can focus on that?
Yes, I think that's a good reminder to speakers. Certainly they're entitled to speak to enrollment in the context of housing, which we've had in the past, those questions raised. But I think as I noted, and it's a good reminder, is that we are not here debating the disposition. That has been completed by the VSB. We are just simply dealing with the rezoning application.
Thank you.
For construction of housing. So just for all speakers coming up. So appreciate that, Counselor Kirby Young. Thank you. And so, go ahead, you'll have five minutes.
I do have some remarks on the disposition, but most of it I think will be relevant, I think you'll find. So, good evening, council. Thank you for your opportunity to be heard. My name's Heman Metta. I'm the Chair of the Fleming Elementary Pack. My daughter Mira is in grade six. My son Krish is in grade three. Both went to kindergarten and we've been in the neighbourhood for a long time. I am here to say as clearly as I can, this rezoning should not proceed. For four years, we've tried respectfully and tirelessly to reason with the Vancouver School Board. We've written letters, presented to school trustees, presented a petition with nine hundred signatures and spoken at every meeting. None of it has mattered. Now, council, you hold the final card. In one of Vancouver's fastest-growing neighbourhoods, we're pricing ninety-nine years of school land at eight point five million dollars, about seven thousand dollars a month for a property that could fit seven full-size houses. Again, seven thousand dollars a month for seven lots. The math fails our children and our kids will never see a dime of that money. The numbers do not hold up. The Vancouver School Board says Fleming will be only seventy-six percent full by twenty thirty-one. That's their justification for carving off our land. The truth, Fleming is already overcapacity today, to answer your question. There's four hundred and twenty-two students in a building built for roughly four hundred, so I'm not sure where the ten student capacity is coming from. That projection was false when it was written and every year it became more and more absurd. The new RS zoning has already unleashed multiplex construction across all our catchments. More families are moving in now. The city's own housing policies guarantee growth, but the VSB pretends it's not happening. If this council approves a rezoning based on those obsolete numbers, you are locking in a permanent shortage of classroom space. When we need more capacity, we'll be forced to put portables on our only soccer field because you allowed the rest of it to be paved over. What we lose can never be replaced. The two full basketball courts that our kids are used to will be gone, replaced by two half-cores jammed beside the playground. We can't even play a proper game on that court. The only green we have now is on the hills around the property. Like Byron said, we don't have any other green fields. Instead of, you know, kids come home with bloody knees every week because it's all gravel. Instead of fixing that, the plan makes it worse. Once this six-story building goes up, there's no space left for growth, for play, for real fields, for a real field. For ninety-nine years, the lifetime of a child, a parent and a grandchild combined, Fleming will be boxed in and shortchanged. There are better options and VSB knows it. The school board owns Kingsgate Mall worth tens of millions of dollars and other underused properties that could easily be used to fund upgrades or build teacher housing. Instead, they choose the easy target, an east-side Vancouver school where immigrant families work two jobs and can't attend every meeting. Let's be honest, this would never happen on the west side. No one would dare lease our school play space in Carisdale or Point Gray where our mayor lives, which he's not here by the way. But on the east side...
Please, we're not here to comment on where people live and bearing on their decision-making.
Fair enough.
So that's really the offside. So, but again, just to refocus on the rezoning application itself and the proposed housing development. I know you have pre-written notes, I'm giving you some leeway, but...
Fair enough.
Okay.
Sounds good. But on the east side, they thought we wouldn't fight back. They were wrong. This is not equity, this is exploitation. Fleming families come from over twenty-five countries. Many speak English as a second language. We are the backbone of this city. Nurses, cab drivers, cleaners, tech workers, small business owners. We contribute, we pay taxes and we trust our institutions to look out for our children. Instead, those institutions are taking from our kids because it's politically easier than standing up to the ministry or doing the hard financial work. You have a choice tonight. You can side with short-term money or you can stand up for the next hundred years of Vancouver's children. You can tell the VSB that school yards are not for sale. This will save ten other east-side schools that will suffer the same fate if this goes through because this will set a precedence. You can demand that they use non-school properties to raise funds and leave education land alone. If this land is rezoned tonight, the decision will echo for a century. My grandchildren, who could be here in less than twenty years, will have no space to play, no courts to compete on, no green fields to run on because in 2025, we didn't have the courage to say no. Mayor and council, you talk about a livable city. There is nothing livable about taking play space from four hundred and twenty-two children in exchange for a developer's profit and seventeen discounted rentals. We ask you to show real leadership, reject this rezoning and tell the school board to fix its data, fix its priorities and find another way. Because when our children look back, they won't remember the financial spreadsheets. They'll remember whether their city protected their school.
Thank you, and that is your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number four is withdrawn. We have speaker number five, Rudy Chang, in person. And again, I know you've probably already prepared your presentation, but I am just going to remind you to speak to the rezoning application, not to the disposition of property that is not before us as a decision tonight. That has been made and completed.
Thank you, your worship and honourable member of the council. My name is Rudolph Chang, Vancouver resident, and I am speaking on behalf of my grandchildren and my grandchildren's great-grandchildren. Let's look at Mount Pleasant School, Kingsway and Main Street. The school board had a deal for nineteen-nine years in nineteen... Next slide please. Sorry, I'm used to clicking myself, so. And at the land value with an eight point two-five percent rent. Guess what? The city rezoned it and increased the floor space use from one to three. Yet, the Supreme Court in December ruled that, no, 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 it's based on current use of one point zero. So the city and the school board has lost revenue. Next slide, please. The school board's mandate is education and education. Next. In thirty years, the use of land and zoning had changed in Vancouver. Next. Ninety-nine years, please. Who knows what will happen? One thing for sure though, the Vancouver School Board and the city would have lost its right for ninety-nine years. Next, please. The sustainability plan of the school board is, number one, please, next, next slide. Higher population density needs this land and also the green space, as well pointed out by previous speakers. Number three is to resource and climate change. Proposed lease extinguishes the land use for green space for ninety-nine years. Next, please. Perhaps a mini ecosystem where the students from grades one to twelve can monitor and study climate change. Next slide. On school grounds and at their backyard. Next, please. Look at all the buildings. Next, click. There's a rising enrollment demand. There's no surplus school grounds. All the houses that are coming up and the projection revised. Next slide, next click, please. The next twelve to twenty-five years, who knows what the student population will be in ninety-nine years? Already is indicated growing student population. Next. Negative impact of the entire city block long. Six plus one-story building on sunlight exposure to Fleming School Track Field. Next, please. This is how I see it. Six plus one-story mixed-use right on Kingsway is a humongous building, not just a little small building on the picture. Next, please. Here's what we are seeing. Please click on the next three clicks. Some are salted, no problem, the shade is not bad. Next, click. When the students start coming back in September, the fall equinox comes in. Next, 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 three slides. The shadow of the building cast longer and longer exponentially. Next, please. Long dark shadow blocks sunlight to track field and to the children of Fleming. Next, please. Fleming School ground lease, ninety-nine years for eighty-five thousand dollars a year or seven thousand dollars a month. With my pension, my wife's pension and perhaps a couple of other people's pension and I work part-time, I can rent it for seven thousand dollars a month. Next, please. And guess what? Conflict of interest. How could the school board's staff got priority? And we are looking at only a proposal of twenty percent below market. It's a token gesture, token excuse to privatise the land. Next, please. Next, click, two clicks. Land use giveaway, seven thousand dollars a month. And guess what? The city and the school board might have to buy back a premium price should the need of the public changes. Ten, twenty years down the road. Eighty-five feet high building. Oh, can you back up one, please? Blocks the sport field and vitamin C exposure in the fall, winter and spring. The entire school year is not compatible with health and sports, non-compatible with neighbourhood homes. Next, please. Ninety-nine-year exclusion act. This is what I see. It extinguishes the right of school ground to four generations of students. Security, retail activities, potentially expose students to unhealthy enticements. Potato chips, candies. Public needs, the city and school board might be obligated to buy back the lease at premium price when the need changes in ten, fifteen, twenty years, ninety-nine years, who knows? Next, please. And I think council members and the mayor probably have seen a copy of this. If not, I can loan it to you. Next, click. No, back up one slide. One hundred and two years after the Chinese Exclusion Act, and this shows all the impacted people, including Douglas Zhang and Wan Kam Yau, the first person born in B.C. of Chinese descent. We are fighting for the right of students be not excluded for another ninety-nine years. Look at the proponent and look at the student population. Exclusion Act, we are relieving it.
Thank you for...
Please?
Thank you for your comments. That is your time.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity.
Yes, and thank you. Thank you for speaking to council this evening. We are going to move to a couple more speakers. Speaker six, Yishan Lau. I'm sorry if I mispronounced that. Yishan?
Yeah.
You have up to five minutes to address council.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Yishan Lau. I'm here to speak for the students of this school and the kids in my community. I went to Fleming Elementary, from kindergarten to grade seven, and I want what's best for the school. Selling this piece of land is not the right decision. I'm here tonight because I believe we deserve something better, something greener. Fleming does not have a real field. There's no grass to run on, no soft place to fall. Instead, there's a gravel field where kids get cuts and scrapes all the time. But now, the city and school board are planning to take our last and only chance to create a safe, green play space for students and for the community. We're not asking for much. We're asking that the staff parking lot be moved towards the busy Forty-Ninth Street so that land can become what it should be, a real field, a park, a place where we can play, breathe and just be kids. Instead, this public land, land that's supposed to belong to everyone, is being handed over for ninety-nine years. This public space is being sold off for the price of a few condos. And what did Fleming get in return? Two half-sized basketball courts instead of two full-size ones and the loss of the extra space that used to be a part of this land. Meanwhile, Fleming is already full with no room to grow. Just like, just like many families who are moving in, the Fleming cannot keep up with the capacity and may need to build portables. If this land is sold, the only space left to be expanded would be on the soccer field, taking away even more space. Almost nine hundred parents, teachers and neighbours have signed a petition against this rezoning. So please, do it for the kids and the community. Remove the fences from our basketball courts and give us back our green space. Give the field my community and family deserves. Save this land for future generations to come. Because once this land is gone, it's gone forever. Please make sure future students have something lasting, something that's not concrete, not condos, but a future with room to play, to breathe and to grow. Thank you.
Thank you for addressing council. Speaker number seven, Caleb Tran. Is Caleb in person? On the phone now? Okay. Caleb, are you there?
Yeah.
Are you a resident of Vancouver?
Hi, yeah, I live near here and I support this.
And just a reminder, as I was noting to other speakers, that we are hearing on your perspective on the proposed development, not on the VSB decision.
Yeah.
You have up to five minutes. Go ahead.
This is way too small. I want to see something like ten or twenty stories, almost a Taipei one-on-one, not something that's like six, seven floors tall. There's like lots of them here on like Fraser, Victoria and night forty-third and even night fifty-seventh. I didn't mention the basketball court, but then throughout the twenty-tens, a lot of people actually stopped using it as much because people started...
Speaker, could you just slow down a minute? We're having a hard time with your audio, so could you just slow down and maybe, yeah, just try again?
Yeah, they mentioned basketball court, but then through the twenty-tens, people stopped using it as much because people just use their phones and stuff now. So like even by the time they shut it down, people didn't really play much there. And it's like, I want them to think taller, that's a good thing. More people live here, it's like a better community, so we should have taller buildings. We need more homes. We need them here, in Southland. Yeah, and near all the schools, there haven't been enough new homes near here. It's like it's less than the number of high school graduates in Vancouver, more than the number of new homes built like for most of the past ten years. When I went to Taipei, it was one of the best things of being around like all the giant buildings that tower over you. Makes a very like communal feeling and a very environmental feeling.
Speaker, we're still having trouble hearing you. I think you're trying to speak to the application and you're talking about buildings, but it's very hard to hear you.
Yeah? Hello?
We're not hearing you very well. Speaker, we're not hearing you very well.
Uh, okay. Uh, can you hear?
Yes. Again, you're speaking to the application on East Forty-Ninth?
Yeah. I see that, uh, these tall buildings are really awesome because you get to live closer to more shops, to more people, and they look really cool. Um, and I want that here on Forty-Nine, uh, which is near me. So earlier, like Mike Clasen mentioned that this is one of the most diverse areas in Vancouver. It's actually like the one of the most diverse areas in Canada and also in North America. But there's a lot of people leaving, uh, and you wouldn't actually see that because it's like, uh, because you, it's like not, oh, yeah. Uh, it's like a rounding area, you would think, but it's like a lot of people are leaving because there's no way for them to live near here because we haven't built enough homes near here, uh, in like the past ten years. It's like basically everything has been like lanely house or like just an extra building, uh, duplexes near here and there. And like more density preserves communities, but like single-family homes destroy them. Yeah, yeah, bye.
Thank you, speaker. Thanks for calling in this evening. Uh, speaker number eight, Jennifer Lau on the phone.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Jennifer, just before you begin, are you a resident of Vancouver? And again, you confirm that?
Yes, I am.
And just as a reminder that, uh, we are only addressing the application, not the VSB disposition.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am here to express strong opposition to the proposed rezoning of Fleming Elementary School. I am a parent of two children at Fleming, one in grade two and a three-year-old in the licensed daycare on the third floor. This is already one of the busiest intersections in the city, a major thoroughfare with heavy traffic and limited pedestrian safety. It's also an area that's identified by the city of Vancouver as a low-canopy neighborhood, and I believe that the city should be working to increase the urban forest cover and green space and not add a concrete jungle or a building. Someone mentioned earlier that there were ten spaces available for grade ones to seven. I want to mention that there were zero spaces available for kindergarten this year. And turning families away at the very start, you know, at the beginning of a child's kindergarten journey sends a really clear message. We are not planning for growth. I also want to highlight the licensed daycare that is within the school on the top floor, which currently serves about sixty-nine children from infants to preschoolers. This is a critical resource for working families like myself. And, um, the outdoor space, the ability to go outside on safe walks is essential for these young children's physical, social, and emotional development, as Byron mentioned earlier. This is not an inconvenience. Um, early childhood educators depend on these spaces for programming that supports gross motor skills, nature-based learning, and healthy routines. And already surrounded by two busy streets at Forty-Ninth at night, there are limited places where they can go. Parking in the area is already really strained and will become worse, making the area less safe, less accessible for the young families who rely on this space. Um, affordable housing matters, but not at the expense of our children's learning environment. Adding density without addressing first the educational infrastructure in the community is not planning. It's creating a future crisis that our kids and their kids will have to deal with in the future. I do realize this conversation is not about the disposition, but the reality is that the school board is not a real estate developer. It's core mandate of education, and I really urge city councillors to question this and not have our land be sold for short-term revenue that undermines long-term educational needs. So I urge city councillors to help us pause this process and to go back to VSB with the hard questions. Consult meaningfully with the community, reassess the long-term educational and childcare needs, and use realistic projections, and most importantly, put children first. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jennifer. Clerks, do we have anyone else on the line or in chambers? Anyone on the line?
No, no, not on the line.
And we'll do our third and final call for speakers. A number is one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by the participant code one zero six one four four five pound. Uh, phone number is posted on X and will be displayed during the recess. We'll take a two-minute recess. Speakers in chambers are on the line. Clerks?
I'm not seeing anybody in the chamber, and I'm waiting. Um. No.
Okay. In that case, I'll close the speakers list. Uh, do we have any further correspondence since five P.M.?
Oh. My apologies, Chair. There is somebody on the line. It's just coming through. It was just before you would close the list.
We'll allow it. Um, speaker, could you identify yourselves if you're a resident of Vancouver? And also note that we are speaking to the application, not to the VSB disposition this evening.
Uh, yes, I'm a resident of Vancouver.
Okay, and your name?
Natasha.
Natasha, okay, you may have to turn off your computer there in the background.
Uh, okay, I'm just downstairs, so it's echoing.
Okay, uh, go ahead, Natasha.
Okay, um, can you just make sure that you're showing the slideshow when people are presenting? Because I missed the whole slideshow that the grandfather presented that I really wanted to, it was important to me.
It, it was livestreamed.
Okay, just the slideshow that he made wasn't shown on camera.
Okay, we'll look into that. Um.
We can put it up if we have this. We can put it up on the web.
Okay, we can put it up. We'll find out about putting it up on the website for you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Go ahead. Is that, is that all? Natasha, did you have any comments? Or no, you were just calling in about the PowerPoint? Have we lost Natasha? Okay. In that case, um, okay, thank you. Uh, we'll close the speakers list. Um, any further correspondence? Nope, okay, we'll close receipt of public comments. And, um, just a reminder, council, that we'll need to move the recommendations with the two yellow memos dated October twenty-second and twenty-ninth. Um, and so if I could have someone to, actually, I should before that, if there's any further questions to staff. Oh, I see, Councilor Kirby Young, sorry. Go ahead, council, do you have questions?
I do have a question for staff, if I may. Um, so we've heard from a number of speakers tonight, and I understand, um, their concern that, with the fact that there is a rezoning application on the site and they would prefer that it's used for, it's alternative use for the school. Um, and we've heard from a number of those speakers, they would like council to vote against it. What happens if we vote against this rezoning? What's the outcome?
The, the rezoning would be rejected. The, the school still maintains a lease, or the developer still has a lease with the school board, and the, the site could be developed under his existing R-one-one and C-one zoning, but.
And, and what would that be? The existing R-one-one and C-one?
Uh, under a C-one zoning, they could develop technically a, uh, four-story mixed-use building, a small, little four-story mixed-use building. R-one-one is a multiplex zoning up to four to six units per lot, given that this is one lot. Actually, there is, there is a sizable portion of this lot. You probably might get six, six to eight units under the R-one-one zoning on this lot. Without further subdivision.
Within a four-story, but, but council, people might feel like council might be sending a statement by voting against it, but we can't compel the school board to, um, pursue an alternate use of the land?
Uh, that is their decision.
Right, okay. That's my clarification question. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councilor Kirby Young. Can I have someone to move the recommendations along with the two yellow memos? Need a mover?
I'll move the recommendations.
Councilor Claussen, seconded by Councilor Montague. Uh, any discussion? Uh, Councilor Maloney, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, this, this is a beautiful development, and it looks, looks well-designed and, and appropriate for this area. However, there, there were some very convincing arguments from a number of speakers that we should be planning for growth, um, and that this rezoning will be detrimental to our capacity to redevelop for future densification of this area, which is definitely going to happen. I, I, I'd like to acknowledge the excellent motion of Counselor Joe to promote densification around schools. Um, this land is currently publicly owned, public open space. I, I don't support rezoning public open space for building homes when staff made it clear that there is so much capacity for more density to be built on surrounding land, which already has homes built on it. So we can build more density in this area on area, on, on land that already has housing on it. And, and, um, even though it's not within our jurisdiction, um, I don't want to be making a decision, um, that allows, um, growth, um, of density on public open space. Um, Ninth Street and Forty-Ninth Streets are both very busy arterial roads, and I would prefer to locate this building on a quieter street, um, due to the significant detrimental health effects on residents, um, of noisy roads and polluted roads, especially when we do so little to reduce those negative effects through enforcement and traffic calming on arterial roads. And I know it's not our jurisdiction, but I don't think anyone would mind me saying that I love Ishan's idea of moving the staff car park closer to the arterial and creating additional space for the kids. So I, I won't be voting in support of this. Thank you. Sorry.
Uh, thank you, Councilor Maloney. Councilor Kirby Young?
Yeah, may I ask another follow-up question, Chair, through you to staff?
Point of information, yes.
Point of information. Um, what's the rental availability and vacancy rate in this particular neighborhood with respects to availability? Do we have that?
I would ask, um, thank you for the question. I would ask if housing staff online, if, uh, could respond to that question?
Hello, Sarah Robyn Housing. Thank you for the question. Um, in terms of the vacancy rate in the southeast Vancouver, it was, uh, one percent in twenty-twenty-four. Um, at Vancouver Citywide, it was one point six percent.
Okay, so it's significantly lower in this neighborhood with respects to availability for this type of rental housing?
Yeah, somewhat lower than the citywide average.
Right, and it is just clarifying that it is twenty percent are below-market units, and the below-market rates are based on citywide averages, so they sometimes can be more than twenty percent below what the new rental rate might be, as we saw depicted in the presentation. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah, twenty percent at a twenty percent below citywide average of rental stock, uh, across the city.
Okay, and also are, um, in sort of the Southman area, how do the incomes in the neighborhood compare relative to other neighborhoods in the city? Follow-up point of information. Generally, it, if you don't have exact numbers, but could you generally characterize it?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have numbers in terms of incomes in the area. We'd have to follow up on that information. Sorry about that.
Okay. Um, thank you. I know that this is a, I, I really, I will comment that I really do hear and appreciate the disappointment, uh, from folks with respects to the school decision. Uh, I too, although, uh, I know we're not supposed to be commenting that, it is extraordinarily low lease, one could argue. Um, we know our city is growing, uh, schools will need to as well, and I can appreciate the disappointment around that. It's a tough position for councillors to be in, to hear the disappointment from some of the locals, but we have a very specific, um, responsibility, uh, within a public hearing, which is considered quasi-judicial process, which is to consider the application on its merits. We really do need housing. We have a low vacancy rate in the city as a whole. We've heard that it's low, particularly in this neighborhood. Um, and not only is this providing new rental housing, I understand it sets the school back to provide a bit of a buffer for kids, but it also provides significantly, um, a number of below-market units, which is not insignificant when you look, for example, at a one-bedroom costing one thousand four hundred and seventy dollars versus two thousand one hundred and ninety-four dollars. That is a big deal, um, in terms of somebody's monthly ability to sustain themselves or for a family, or you've got parents with a kid, that maybe they have a two-bedroom, and it's two thousand dollars versus almost twenty-nine-hundred. So it's a, it's a, uh, I appreciate sort of the challenge that we're in here. Um, I'm, uh, regretful that the advocacy to the school board was not successful because I think some compelling points have been made. Um, but I do deeply support new housing in the city, and that's the decision that's really in front of us. But, um, I am really feeling for the families, grandparents, and the kids. Good job on speaking tonight, um, around the fact that you really had different hopes for this land. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Kirby Young. Uh, Councilor Claussen, go ahead.
Thanks very much. Uh, I'd like to echo those sentiments, the, really appreciate the, the time and effort and advocacy, even having young people come and speak. Um, but what we did hear, uh, is regardless of the, uh, outcome of this vote, this, this particular land lease would result in, uh, some structures, whether they be four-story, whether they be multiplex, uh, or a six-story, uh, building. As I mentioned, I do have, um, the benefit of hindsight of the, of the area. I've been watching as the district built a school back and away from that corner, uh, with the, the old, uh, you know, century-old building being torn down. And so now this particular area, but, but, you know, I've been frustrated with the school district. I've been quite candid about that, um, because they have, um, but I also know that they are under huge financial pressures. They are, um, uh, dependent upon the province. The province is, uh, having its own financial struggles right now. Uh, but I do think that, uh, having a, uh, a more modern playing field instead of a gravel field would be a lovely thing to see over time there. But I know that in order to be able to pay for something like that, the school district has to be able to start thinking about how they're going to get the revenue for that, uh, either revenue or, um, or support from the province. Uh, because you're right, it would be really nice if the rest of that remaining place had a, um, uh, had was really sort of had better surfaces, uh, for playing different types of sports. Um, but the, the, the frontage along Forty-Ninth right now is, um, uh, uh, there's no displacement of anybody living there at the present time. Um, it's an asphalt, uh, surface, and so, um, it, it just, and, and as, uh, Speaker number seven, um, expressed, you know, there is, um, a lot of, uh, need for housing in this neighborhood, and this, this is the only project that we have right now that would probably be able to bring that house. that would probably be able to bring that housing to this part of the city, uh, anytime soon. So, um, uh, again, I think it's, um, it, it's a, it's a challenging decision, but it also, again, I think even if we were to say no to this one, I think inevitably we would be seeing housing of some kind coming onto this property. But to do it well and to have a, uh, commercial area attached to it, um, I think would be the most appropriate for this neighborhood to make it more walkable. And it would, uh, invite, uh, potentially, uh, new families and especially with that below-market rental aspect to it as well. Thanks very much.
Thank you, councillor Claussen. Uh, councillor Joe?
Yes, thanks, Chair. So I'd like to ask a point of information through your chair to the city staff.
Yes, go ahead.
Thanks. So, uh, looking at this application, can you 100% sure this application, uh, comply with all the policy you listed on this, on this report?
Uh, yes, the principal policy is the, um, secure rental policy, and it does meet the intent of the secure rental policy.
Okay. And there's some other policy listed in this report. It's all compliance, all in compliance with those policies, all right?
Uh, we... We, it, uh, we will evaluate. There is the principal rezoning-enabling policy, which is the SRP. That's the first pass. And the other ones, yes, we have looked at the other guidelines and policies here, and it is also generally compliant. Note that some of these elements, like the family-room housing unit mix, the 35% requirements, those will be satisfied at the development permit stage as well.
Okay, thanks. Um, okay, so I'll just provide some brief comments. So, I mean, I think, I think as a councillor, I have to stay within my lane. I mean, if this land complies with all the policy, there's no reason for me to decline this project. Uh, I want to address some comments from one of the speaker, Rudy Cheng. I, I think you talk about the Chinese Exclusion Act, the paper trail, uh, the Chinese Canadian Museum. I've been there many times. I can relate to that very much. But, um, really, in a democracy system, we have to stay within our lane. We are talking about, we are debating a land, land use policy, same as all other lands. If it is compliant with all the city policy. I see the emotion, but I cannot let the emotion to judge my own decision here because we have to be fair to all the applications. There's no fundamental reason for me to decline this project. Again, a lot of concern you have is within the Vancouver School Board. There's nothing to do with, uh, City of Vancouver. It's not even within our jurisdiction. It's within the province jurisdiction. I would recommend, if you have any concern regarding that decision, go to your local, local MOAs, and that may be the right channel to voice your opinion. For us, we are talking about a land use, which is compliant with all the policy. I don't find any excuse for me to decline this project. So with that, uh, uh, I, I'm going to support this application. I'm sorry for, for, for all the emotion here, but, um, again, you know, I have to make a very justified decision because of my role in council. Thanks.
Uh, thank you, councillor Joe. And with that, I'll call the question. Um, could everyone please vote on screen? Uh, clerks, I'll take a vote assist in favor, please. And to those of you online, please have your screens on. Thank you. Uh, thank you, council, and, uh, that does pass with councillors Orr and Maloney in opposition. Uh, can I get a motion to adjourn, please? Moved, seconded, all in favor? And that carries. Thank you. Uh, thank you to the clerks and staff and the public for being here. Thank you to council.
Thank you, Chair. Good night.
Good night.